Okay. Ms. Wall? Can you grab Ms. Wall? So I'd like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. At this time, a motion is in order for the approval of the meeting agenda. Ms. Jackson?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Ms. Zargarpur, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Is your...where's the vote? Moving on to the motion in our closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter a closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, and assignment of promotion of specific officers and employees under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to discuss with Division Counsel and Staff actual and probable litigation and specific legal matters involving specific staff and students under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 and 8. Four, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees, which requires legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. And five, to discuss and receive briefings by staff members relating to the security of school facilities, the safety of persons using such facilities, and actions taken to respond to such matters where a discussion in open meeting would jeopardize the security of such facilities pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
At this time, the Prince William County School Board will enter closed session, return to open session in one hour. The Prince William County School Board now re-enter open session, or return to open session. A closed session certification motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of November 15, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to the approval of appointments and releases. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in the closed session.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
My second.
Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to 9.02. A motion is in order for the approval of request of religious exemptions. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the request for religious exemptions from compulsory school attendance in case numbers RE22-14 and RE22-15.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
My second.
Please vote. Or any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Okay, fantastic. All right, next we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. We have Chance Williams, our school board representative from Forest Park High School, will lead us in the pledge tonight. Okay. Before we go on to the next part of the meeting, I would like to...I'd like to have a moment of silence for the students that died at the University of Virginia Sunday night in that unfortunate, unspeakable tragedy. Lavelle Davis Jr., Devon Chandler, and DeShawn Perry. They are students at the University...were students at the University of Virginia and members of the football team there. If we can have a moment of silence? Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on to our thriving futures focus. In this evening, tonight, during this section of our meeting, we will get to recognize the accomplishments of eight of our schools. Ms. Lori Williams, the Woodbridge Magisterial District, will start us off tonight. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman, Dr. Latif. Eight of our schools were recently named Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources Virginia Naturally Schools. There were 35 schools statewide who received this recognition. The Virginia Board of Education has recognized the Virginia Naturally School Program as the official environmental education school recognition program for the state. This program honors the efforts of Virginia schools to increase the environmental awareness and stewardship of our youngest citizens. The Virginia Naturally School Program evaluates schools in several categories, including administrative support for conservation and energy education, staff development, meaningful field experiences, library media center equipment and resources, instructional settings, or outdoor classrooms and community partnerships and support. First, I would like to recognize Freedom High School. Their principal, Chevelli Smith, is here tonight with Jessica Dorian, Specialty Programs Coordinator, to share a brief description of their amazing program.
Thank you. Freedom High School was honored to be recognized as a Virginia Naturally School. We are the home of the Center for Environmental and Natural Sciences, and our mission is to promote a sustainable community through hands-on collaborative learning experiences. Our mission could not be carried out without the support of our faculty, staff, administrators, and Prince William County's dedicated energy and sustainability team.
Last year, Freedom provided its students and staff with many opportunities to participate in sustainable activities. A sampling includes practices in citizen science from on-campus cleanups, onsite energy audits, and an all-day waste characterization that opens students' eyes to the incredible amount of wasted food and contaminated recycling. Those learning opportunities prompted students to encourage change. Students increased recycling efforts and made posters to educate students and staff about proper recycling techniques. Freedom also provides students with many hands-on outdoor activities. The onsite stormwater pond is used to teach students and staff about the importance of water quality to protect our local watersheds. We have an onsite greenhouse and vegetable garden to promote local farm-to-table practices, and the newest addition, a native pollinator garden, that was developed by a student who was awarded a grant from Conservation Nation. Freedom is also proud of two students who were recognized by the Environmental Protection Agency in May of 2022 with the Presidential Environmental Youth Award for their efforts to reduce the use of single-use plastic beverage bottles. Most recently, Freedom received Green Mentors International Green School Award in recognition of efforts and contributions made to sustainable and responsible education. We will continue our school's commitment to sustainability by striving to earn Year Two recognition as we build on our efforts to increase environmental awareness and stewardship of students and community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Up next is award-winning Kilby Elementary School. Assistant Principal Amy Tuthill and Science Lead Annie...Angie, excuse me, Calligan, are here to say a few words.
Unfortunately, Angie couldn't make it, but she's here in heart.
Sounds good.
Chairman, Dr. Latif, Vice Chairwoman Jackson, and members of the school board, and Dr. McDade, thank you. We would like to thank Kilby Green students and teachers for helping Kilby to be recognized for this award. Teachers Angie Callahan and Julie Jones led the Kilby Team Garden Initiative where students grew vegetables from seeds and then transplanted them into the outdoor garden. Students also learned about sustainability efforts from Kilby parents, and we would like to thank the Prince William County Schools Energy and Sustainability Department, along with Jeannie Jabara, for assisting with energy audits and ideas to incorporate the outdoors into learning opportunities for our students. We look forward to our second year.
Well, congratulations to both Freedom High School and Kilby Elementary School. Thank you very much. So Ms. Ralston of the Neabisco District is unable to be with us tonight, so it will be my privilege to introduce the Neabisco Magisterial District winners. And our third award-winning school this evening is the Neabisco Elementary School. Principal Chris Tsang is here to share a little bit about their efforts related to this award. Principal Tsang, thank you.
I've also brought Jessica Oswald, one of the Green Team coordinators and supervisors, along with Angie Bates and Mary Wong. They led the charge at Neabisco. Our Green Team at Neabisco is fairly new, but we have a great group. We started with 10 kids in grades three through five and have almost 30 now in K through five. These kids are enthusiastic about leaving the world a better place than they found it, and the three supervisors are inspired by their passion and dedication. We are glad to be along for the ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Tsang. Also from the Neabisco District, Dale City Elementary School earned this designation. Principal Brian Slater and Keaton Beaumont, fifth-grade science teacher, are here this evening to share more.
Thank you, Board, Dr. McDade. I'm going to let Mr. Beaumont, Keaton Beaumont, share. He's the heart and soul of our science program and drives the instruction, so I'm going to let him share the amazing stuff that he's doing in our building.
School board members, thank you for inviting us. We appreciate it. Dale City, we're excited about our science program. I spent 28 years in the Army, and now I'm teaching fifth-grade science. And so I've always wanted to be a teacher and a coach, and now I'm where I belong. I started the program. I wanted to leave something that would be in the school after I went to Florida and retired, which won't be long. But we started a garden this year. It's all-natural plants. There's over 500 of them in there. We put up a fence. We put up places for the kids to read. That's one of our three outdoor learning centers. We have two other ones that we're working on. One of them is partly done, so when I get my three done, then somebody else will take over. But we're having fun at...we're excited at Dale City. We're excited about a new principal, a new vice principal, and the things that they offer and let me do. The kids are excited. We teach science after school four days a week.
Wow.
To improve our science scores, and we're committed to making our school one of the best in Prince William County. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, and congratulations again to the Neabisco and Dale City Elementary Schools. It is now my privilege to recognize Mrs. Jennifer Wall of the Gainesville Magisterial District. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Good evening. Battlefield High School is also a Virginia Naturally School. Ryan...Principal Ryan Ferreira is accompanied by Karen Carney, science teacher, and they will share a few words about Battlefield's efforts in this area.
Yes, I'm just going to introduce Mrs. Karen Carney because I'm really just her assistant when it comes to this project, so go ahead, Mrs. Carney.
Good evening, and thank you to the school board and Dr. McDade for giving a larger voice to sustainability and a platform on which we can build a thriving future for our students. Thank you also to the staff at Energy and Sustainability Office, especially Jeannie Jabara. She has been instrumental in providing ideas and giving resources to our school to get our feet on the ground and get tasks accomplished. Principal Ferreira, the administration, and the staff at Battlefield are also critical to our success. Anytime I bring an idea to him, his response is the same. "Sounds great, Karen. How can I help? Let's do it." Librarians set up environmental displays and curate resources for our classes. Custodians are willing to shift practices and problem-solve with us. The biggest congratulations goes to the students whose energy and enthusiasm are at the heart of these projects. In addition to several environmental science classes, Battlefield also offers a class in sustainability and renewable technologies through our CASIT specialty program. Students in these classes and the Active Environmental Club promote awareness on topics such as waste reduction, regenerative agriculture, and sustainable energy sources. In fact, just today, in recognition of America Recycles Day, we engaged the entire student body in a lesson on the new rules of recycling. Three students from last year's class passed an industry-recognized exam and were credentialed as lead green associates. They're working to promote energy efficiency in the built environment. We use the building as a teaching tool. We have our outdoor classroom, guest speakers, field experiences. These are the many ways that staff engages students in outdoor learning. Earlier this year, students attended a watershed workshop on the Potomac River through the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and planted trees in honor of Youth Climate Action Day. So thank you for the opportunity and this award. Working with our future naturalists and future stewards has been a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also proud to share that Mullen Elementary School earned this honor as well, also one of the great schools in the Gainesville District. So our new principal, Jennifer Hoffauer, is joining this...joined...are you joined this evening?
She's...
Yes, okay.
She is here.
Yeah, okay. Joined this evening by teacher Janice Pfeifer. So I'll turn the time over to you for a second.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Dr. Latif, Vice Chairwoman Jackson, members of the school board, and Dr. McDade. My name is Jennifer Hoffauer. I'm a proud principal of Mullen Elementary School, and I am joined tonight by one of our amazing staff members, Ms. Janice Pfeifer, who is in collaboration with our IB coordinator. They have spearheaded efforts to create more environmental literacy and stewardship with our staff and students. As an international baccalaureate school, it is our charge to help create globally-minded citizens who see the ability to affect change in our community with the choices that we make. Mullen has been very eager to participate the last year in two programs that have challenged us to make better choices, and those are recycling and composting. We would like to thank Jeannie Jabara, Coordinator of the Energy Education, for her support and encouragement of our efforts. She was instrumental in helping bring composting program to our school. Last year, our school community was able to compost roughly 16,000 pounds of food, which in turn created nutrient-rich soil we could return to the earth to help support our healthy environment. We're incredibly honored and proud to have been selected as Virginia Naturally School by the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. We're encouraged and excited to continue this work in Year Two, and we look for lasting impacts we can make on our community and our environment. So thank you so much to everyone for their support and for your recognition of our work this evening, and we will continue the charge in Year Two. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Congratulations to Battlefield High School and Mullen Elementary. We now move on to the Brentsville Magisterial District with Ms. Adele Jackson, Vice Chairwoman, and she will recognize a winning school in her district.
It is an honor to congratulate Piney Branch Elementary School under the direction of Principal Steve Thorne. Mr. Thorne is here this evening to tell us more about the school's environmental programs. Welcome.
Prince William County School Board, Dr. McDade, thank you so much for having us. We appreciate the recognition for this award. This really came authentically for our school out of an effort to revitalize an outdoor classroom that had been neglected, and it spawned a whole engagement in authentic, hands-on, outdoor learning that has been invaluable both for our school and our students, but also our community as they've come and rose up. This has really become a labor of collaboration for us. Our PTO has been unbelievably supportive. We've had...we've worked hand-in-hand with Dominion Energy, who has been unbelievable in helping us transform what used to be some benches sitting in a lecture-style to a full-blown, inclusive, outdoor classroom that extends into the back of our property in the woods, and is tremendous. And then on top of that, the work we've done with Jeannie Jabara from the Office of Sustainability and the composting program. But most importantly, what's happened for us through all these efforts that just came about out of needs in our school and things that we wanted to have be more engaging for our kids is that we created a Green Team. And under the support of three of our teachers, Roxanne Edwards, Cherie Key, and Harmony Bisco, they created a Green Team last year that just rose to the challenge and supported all of these initiatives with our kids. And so all of these things really became student-led, and Vernett applying for this award and being recognized is really a recognition of our kids' efforts as we had, I think upwards of about 60 kids come out for our Green Team that was supported through our HEALS money, through the ARPA grants. And, you know, we did this because we wanted to give our students a purpose for belonging that extended outside of our school hours, and they found a passion for this that has now transcended our curriculum and our instruction and makes it an authentic way for our students to understand science, but also have an outdoor space to go and read, to go and write, to explore and make observations. That's getting outside of our standardized curriculum but brings it to life and makes it meaningful. And so thank you for your support and efforts in this. We look forward to what more we can do to grow our efforts. We have live specimens coming in. We have...through the support of our PTO. And right now, we have about 500 trout that are growing from eggs in our classrooms, and it's going to be really exciting at Piney Branch. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and congratulations to Piney Branch Elementary School. Our final award-winning schools from the Coles Magisterial District, represented by Ms. Lisa Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. It should be no surprise that our 2022 National Blue Ribbon School, Coles Elementary, has also been named a Virginia Naturally School. Karen Wolf and Lisa Story are here to tell us more about their program at Coles Elementary.
Hello, I'm Karen Wolf, and this is Sonia Green from Coles Elementary, and happy America Recycles Day. So we want to thank Chairman-at-Large, Dr. Latif, the Coles District School Board Representative, Mrs. Zargarpur, other distinguished school board representatives, our school superintendent, Dr. McDade, and our supportive Associate Superintendent for Central Area Schools, Mr. Erickson, for inviting us to the school board meeting this evening to celebrate schools who earned the Virginia Naturally Award. We'd also like to thank Jeannie Jabara and the Environmental Sustainability Program here in Prince William County that has been phenomenally supportive of our programs, and Mrs. Ramona Richardson, who is a retired kindergarten teacher from our school, who...for her leadership and environmental vision. Other people that we definitely need to thank would be members of our garden committee and our garden club, our entire staff for their efforts to teach students the importance of environmental sustainability, and also our Coles PTA and members of our community for supporting the vision that we have at our school. So we have recently earned our...this is our ninth Virginia Naturally Award. We take environmental sustainability very seriously at our school, and we're proud of our efforts to develop environmental stewardship programs such as teaching our students about composting. We have an active program in our school for composting in our cafeteria, and we recycle, and we teach our students about the importance of recycling and the impact it has on our planet and on the oceans. We observe and take care of trout in partnership with the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. And finally, we provide students with hands-on experience such as observing butterflies in our butterfly garden, which is beautiful. We plant, tend to, and harvest vegetables and fruits in our many gardens that we've got on our...at our school, and we provide students the opportunities to observe how fruits grow, and we have an orchard in the back of our school as well. So thank you so much for this award. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Zargarpur, and congratulations to all eight of these amazing schools. I'd like to just add my sort of congratulations to our Prince William County Schools Energy Team here at the office. Jamie Jabara, you know, Mr. Gorham, who's gone now. He's left us for bigger and better things. Ms. Wymer, the whole team there. Two things I'd ask the public to do is on Twitter...if you are on Twitter, the PWCS Energy Team is a great resource for knowing what's happening in our schools and learning about these great schools and the work they're doing and the work we're doing on energy and sustainability. And that's where I learned they...there's a great book everyone should read that they recommend, and it's...let me pull it up here. It's 101 Ways to Go Zero Waste by Catherine Keller. Great book. I've read it. My kids have read it now. Recommended by the Energy Team, and a lot of the good work we're doing here comes from the work that the school board did with our sustainability initiative, and this is some of the...some of the fruits of the labor. So we thank you very much. Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations. So many schools. Battlefield, Freedom, Coles, Dale City, Kilby, Mullen, Neabisco, Piney Branch. Congratulations on your designation as a Virginia Naturally School. For our Energy Office, I want to thank you for all of the work that you've done in developing our strategic plan around positive climate and culture, which is focused on sustainability, environmental literacy, and project-based learning. And we have a goal. By 2025, our goal is for at least five schools to receive the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Designation. And for all of our schools that are represented here tonight, the Virginia Naturally Recognition is a gateway to becoming a Green Ribbon School. So thank you so much for all of your efforts. Congratulations to each and every one of you, and I look forward to seeing all of the amazing impact that you each will have, respectively, with our students and our community. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
So we'll ask all of you to come up to the front, and then the school board will come down and take a picture. Okay. At this point, we'll move on to the adoption of the consent agenda. I move the, oh, Ms. Jackson, adoption of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Principal William County School Board approved the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I have a second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who've signed up in advance with the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is one hour. Citizens may speak on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of Principal William County Schools. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you will be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from any clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not, the board will recess, and I will ask the room to be cleared to restore public order. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Tracy Blake.
Good evening. Dr. McDade, Chairman Latif, and the board. My name is Tracy Blake, and my address is on file. I wear many different hats in this community, but today I'm here to speak as the Chair of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity, and how CAES has aligned the work of the Equity Council with the Superintendent's Strategic Plan. Before I start, I just want to thank you for hiring Dr. Brown. CAES has flourished under her, Dr. Brown's leadership. She's a purpose-driven leader with a proven track record of advancing DEI. So, now, I'm here specifically to speak about how commitment area number three, family and community engagement in this, in the strategic plan, have been advanced through the work of the Equity Council. Equity and inclusion are paramount in making parents authentic partners in their student's success. Inclusion of all parents in their students' education helps make parents partners in their students' education. Family engagement improves positive student outcomes. Partnering with parents improves positive student outcomes. Family engagement is inclusive of all kinds of families. The concept of a traditional and nuclear family is no longer the model. Family can be anyone. Grandparents, parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, guardian, et cetera. Equity is not about taking away. It's about supporting. Equity is not just dealing with race. Equity is about impartiality, no matter your race, gender identity, socioeconomic status, whether you're an English language learner, special needs, or gifted. Equity is about fairness, and every student having access and opportunity in Principal William County Schools. CAES has been able to advance parents' rights as well as family and community engagement by recommending that a parent liaison be required at every school in Principal William County. Now, the parent liaison position has been structured and bodied to be a normal and productive position. This position now comes from the central office budget, allowing every school the opportunity to hire a parent liaison unique to their school community, no matter the size of the school, which usually determines the size of the budget. The parent liaison position helps Principal William County Schools build trust between, beyond the classroom with our families. This in turn promotes community responsiveness and continuous interaction with families. Families need to be talked to, not talked at, through the work of our-
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Richard Jesse?
I'm Richard Jesse, and my address is on file. These opinions and statements are mine and not necessarily those of the board member Lily Jesse, my wife, and I hope that she agrees, but she might not. I am confused by PWA when they claim that the school board who voted for the certification of the union are now considered union busters. I'm using round numbers as an example that I believe are correct, but I could be wrong. If there are 8,000 school employees that fits into the batch for PWA, for certification of the union, PWEA has to get 4,000 or 50% of these employees to vote yes or no to move forward. If that occurs, then 30% of those 4,000 or 2,400 who voted has to vote yes to be represented by PWA. If PWA currently has more than 2,000 members, you should already have 2,000 yes votes, and why would it be so difficult for PWA to get another 2,000 employees to vote yes or no for the initial certification? PWEA wants to compare themselves to the school board members, and I think you should. They didn't win their election without spending time and money convincing voters to vote for them. They went out and worked. PWEA needs to convince your current members and 2,000 others to vote. You did it before, and why can't you do it now? I understand that PWEA doesn't want to be, endorse some of the Democrats on the board. For the last two elections, PWA has not endorsed Lily Jesse. I believe you should be represented by a union, but if you can't get your members in other non-member union to vote yes or to, or no to reach the 4,000 needed for certification, and then with your current membership to come up with 30% or 2,400 votes in favor of PWA, perhaps you haven't convinced others, others that they should have a union. Do you think that the board members up there would have won with less than 30% of the votes? If you can get 2,400 employees out of 8,000 to vote for PWA, 5,600 are saying they didn't want the union. If you can't get 2,400, 5,600 are saying they didn't want the union. I ask all Democrats, even if you are a strong union supporter, why would you support a union that 70% of employees did not want? I do believe that Principal William County, Principal E.A. can do and form a union, and I think it is something that they should do, even if they don't like it.
Jennifer Rokowski, and then after her will be Jennifer Roberts and Eileen Deveraux. Jennifer Rokowski.
Hi, good evening. Let's go wait for my time to go back to green. Awesome. Hi, good evening, Chair Latif, Vice Chair Jackson, school board members, and Dr. McDade. My name is Jennifer Rokowski, and I reside in the Yonkukuan District. This week is American Education Week. The National Education Association was one of the creators and original sponsors of American Education Week after a meeting with the American Legion in 1919 to seek ways to generate public support for education after noticing the high literacy rate in America. Here are some of the themes each day. Today, Tuesday, the 15th, is Family Day. According to experts, students achieve higher achievement and have lower absenteeism when their parents take an active role in their children's education. We encourage parents to volunteer in their student's schools wherever possible and whenever possible, or to attend evening family events and PTO meetings if available. If work schedule prevents you from attending events in person, make sure that you read the newsletters and information sent home from your students' teachers so that you can engage with your student about what they're learning in class and help them learn organizational skills to complete work and prepare for tests. Tomorrow, November 16th, is ESP Day. ESP stands for Education Support Professionals. ESPs hold a special place in the hearts of everyone in our school communities. If you ask any student about their day, they will likely have a story to share about the bus driver who gets them to and from school safely, the secretary who greets them every morning with a smile, the cafeteria worker who feeds them healthy meals at lunch, or the para educator or TA who provides them with space to learn and grow every day. These ESPs work alongside other caring adults to help our students get what they need to succeed. Thursday, November 17th, is Educator for a Day. School Board members, if you've not already planned to be in school on Thursday, I strongly encourage you to reach out to a teacher, especially at a level of school that you did not work or did not spend much time in. I've been asked to encourage you to reach out to our eighth-grade civics and 12th-grade government teachers so that you can interact with students as they learn about local legislators and our representative government. Finally, Friday, November 18th, is Substitute Educators Day. We know that there is a shortage of substitutes in the county. We encourage all available community members and parents to help fill this shortage, which will also get them more involved in their student's schools and give a better perspective of the challenges our schools, teachers, and students are facing. School Board members, especially those of you who are not or were not full-time educators, I'd love for you to experience a full-day life, a full day in the life of an educator, a full day. As a high school science teacher, I never understood how the elementary day went. When I subbed at an elementary school, it was an eye-opening experience. The number of disruptions to a class for push-in and pull-out, the lack of planning time, the number of preps and required meetings. This year, the number of assessments from the state and county have grown, as well as pressure about test scores and data. I suggest spending a full day with a single educator, have a conversation with those in the classroom to hear about their day-to-day, and see what solutions everyone can come up with so teachers can teach and students can learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Roberts.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. McDade. My name is Jennifer Roberts. I reside in the Gainesville District. My address is on file. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about Principal William County's commitment to family and community engagement. As a parent of two Principal William County students, I fully support this commitment and would like to see it extended to engaging parents, guardians, and community members in creating and sustaining effective and equitable learning environments for all of our students. Principal William County defines equity as the fair and impartial provision of resources, access, and opportunities to all students based on their individual need, regardless of race or ethnicity, socioeconomic status, area of residence, or sexual orientation. Equity works. We know that it works and that we benefit from it. Every time we try on multiple pairs of shoes until we get just the right fit, that's equity working. Every time we visit dozens of homes in search of the right one to meet our family's needs, that's equity working. Each time that we reread the label and dosing instructions on pain reliever before administering it to our child to make sure that we have the right medicine and that we don't give too little or too much, that's equity working. We know that a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't serve communities well in everyday life, and it certainly doesn't serve our students well in education. Providing an equitable education that gives students access to what they need is a collaborative effort amongst parents, guardians, students, educators, and community members. I am thankful to educators and administrators who are already promoting this inclusive culture at their Principal William County Schools. Schools should be a place where all stakeholders work together toward goals that benefit each student. Our schools should be a place that welcomes parents and guardians to participate in the process of learning actively and regularly beyond chaperoning field trips and serving on the PTSO. This partnership can be achieved in any number of ways, including through routine classroom observations, small group or individual help to students who need it, accountability partners, and parents and students providing valuable feedback to staff members about students' experiences. It is my hope that parents and educators at each of our schools will commit to exploring and implementing authentic, result-driven opportunities to invite all stakeholders inside the learning environment to help create and sustain educational equity that benefits all of our students. Thank you.
Eileen Deveraux, and then after that will be Christopher Funderberg and Gloria Jordan. Ms. Deveraux?
Good evening. I'm Eileen Deveraux, a parent from the Gainesville District. I'd like to speak to you today about parental rights and equity. Over the past few years, there's been a special emphasis on parental rights, particularly in public schools. As a parent, I applaud parental involvement in our schools because I believe that parents have an important and a pivotal role in the success of our schools, and we should be partners, a partnership. But partnership is the key word. However, somehow, this partnership in some circles disguises advocacy, has mutated into something else, deceives of power, privilege, and political ploys that doesn't seem to be centered on the well-being and academic success of all children. As school board members and those affiliated with Principal William County Schools, your primary focus is very simple: students. All students have a right to the core values of equity, inclusivity, innovation, integrity, resiliency, and well-being. Yet somehow, there's a subset of parents that willfully mischaracterize equity, inclusivity, and well-being as something that our precious, bright and brilliant children do not need nor deserve. Well, I came to tell you, as parents, we can say and think what we want to say. We can admit and ignore whoever we want to. We can deny and decry, but you can't. You have an obligation to reach and teach all children, including children you will never see, parents that you'll never see at a school board meeting, PTO meeting, parent-teacher conference in any capacity, including children, parents that may be busy, intimidated, indifferent, aloof, or may not care. However, what's great about lunch and thriving futures is that its commitment to core values such as equity, inclusivity, that it does not matter if parents, if students have camera-ready parents and matching T-shirts because it is a plan to acknowledge and affirm all children, and you must stay focused on that. For those of you that are teachers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, counselors, and et cetera, continue to strive to be inclusive and have curriculums, even cafeteria food choices that recognize the incredible diversity within our county. Continue to advocate for each child to have access to resources, opportunities, supports, and interventions to ensure that they maximize their ability and potentials. And I know sometimes in this political climate, things can seem unnecessarily hard and complicated, but I came to remind you of something that is the right thing and easy out and simplifies everything. What is it? Imagine that. And best of all, it is completely liberating. Just choose children, regardless of the noise, regardless- regardless of the parental participation. Simply choose all children each and every time. Thank you.
Christopher Funderberg.
Good evening. I'm Chris Funderberg, and my address is on file, and I am the divergent opinion tonight. So what I bring you is an SEL woke glossary. This is a listing of words that you've heard a lot tonight already, and you'll hear during the DIEE introduction. You may think you know what they mean, but in the context of SEL, DIEE, and CRT, they have different meanings. You may want to write this down. Authentic: lived experiences of people not in positions of power that does not contradict capital T theory, meaning CRT. Example: Larry Elder is the black face of white supremacy because he does not speak with an authentic black voice. Diversity: is more than just acknowledging and tolerating differences. It is a set of conscious practices that involve understanding and appreciating interdependence of humanity, cultures, and natural environment, practicing mutual respect for qualities and experiences that are different from our own, understanding that diversity includes not only ways of being but also ways of knowing, ways other than science, recognizing that personal, cultural, and institutionalized discrimination creates and sustains privileges for some while creating and sustaining disadvantages for others, building alliances across differences so that we can eradicate all forms of discrimination. Equity: the notion of being fair and impartial as an individual engages with an organization or system, particularly systems of grievance. It reflects processes and practices that both acknowledge that we live in a world where everyone has not been afforded the same resources and treatment while also working to remedy this fact. Inclusion: the notion that an organization or system is welcoming to new populations and/or identities. This new presence is not merely tolerated but expected to contribute meaningfully into the system in a positive, mutually beneficial way. Inclusive processes and practices are one that strive to bring groups together to make decisions in collaborative, mutual, equitable ways. You'll hear from the chief diversity officer tonight with lots of flowery wording, including some partial definitions that I've stated. What you may not realize is that diversity in the woke sense, while claiming to tolerate differences, requires that one believes that some people have privileges and others are marginalized based solely on immutable characteristics. It requires redressing these equities by giving privilege to the marginalized and marginalizing the privileged as outlined by critical race theory. Equity is simply a new definition of Marx's "from each according to their ability to each according to their need." School resources are finite and should be applied equally. Equity wants to take resources from the privileged and apply it to the marginalized. There's a fun graphic in the presentation that I'm sure many of you have seen, with three people looking over a fence, and the rocks are redistributed so that everyone can see over the fence. It fails to acknowledge finite resources by producing two rocks out of thin air. Inclusion sounds great, but it doesn't mention that it requires thought compliance, that being that one must accept other identities or they themselves will be excluded. Example: believing that transgenderism is a mental illness is not inclusive and therefore must be excluded. How can you be inclusive and exclusive at the same time? Only the woke could come up with a system like that. Enjoy the presentation. Note that it doesn't address how any of these things has improved anything for students. Thank you.
Gloria Jordan, and then after her will be our last two, Justin Kane and Jen Donnelly. Gloria Jordan.
Good evening, members of the community and school board, Dr. Latif and Dr. McDade. My name is Gloria Jordan. I live in the Coles District, and my address is on file. Before the pandemic, I was appointed to the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity. Since then, we have developed our mission statement and made committees to follow Dr. McDade's strategic plan. Our goal is to use equity as the lens through which we see everything else that relates to the community of Prince William County Public Schools. One of the most common questions I get from community members is, "What is the difference between equality and equity?" Equality is ensuring something is equally administered across the population. For example, every student gets a bike to compete in a race. Equity is ensuring everyone has access to what they need to be successful. In this case, every kid gets a particular bike that would then enable them to succeed. You would not give a preschooler a 10-speed bike or a high schooler a tricycle. Neither would have the opportunity or access to reach their full potential. Distributing bikes equally would hinder some and actually cause them to fall further behind. Equity gives each person what they need to succeed. Therefore, equality and equity are symbiotic, and on this committee, we seek to ensure everyone has the tools and access they need to be successful. As a former PW school nurse, I had a student who would have a seizure every time they went to a school assembly. This was highly mortifying for them. The student stopped attending assemblies and would sit with me in the clinic while their classmates were out enjoying the assembly. When they expressed their disappointment, I asked what might be triggering their seizures. We quickly realized that the strobe lights and loud noises throughout the assembly would often be a trigger, so we tried noise-canceling headphones and entered the assembly shortly after the initial strobe lights were over. And guess what? They have not had another seizure in an assembly since. This is an example of equity. The student was given the necessary tools, noise-canceling headphones, to experience school assembly with their peers. Equality would have been to give all the students noise-canceling headphones, but they all did not need them to be successful. I've also heard people wrongly assume that equity means everyone gets first place, or that to help one, you must take from another. This assertion is false. It is possible to provide tools and access so that everyone can succeed. It is not us versus them. Equity gives each person what they need to succeed. This committee is working tirelessly to give staff and students tools, access, resources, and opportunities to achieve their full potential. It is an honor and a privilege to work under the leadership of Dr. Brown and Dr. McDade and to collaborate with my distinguished fellow board members to make Prince William County Public Schools one of the best places to teach, work, learn, and ultimately thrive. Thank you.
Justin Kane.
Good evening, Chairman Dr. Latif, members of the Prince William County School Board, Dr. McDade, Dr. Brown, parents, students, and teachers. My name is Justin Kane, and I have the distinct pleasure of representing the Gainesville District on the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity, and secondarily, I serve as an advisor on the Equitable Budgeting Task Force. Like many of you, I'm also a parent, and like many of you, I worry that my children will face adversity and whether or not they'll be presented with the opportunities necessary to succeed. But being on this council has opened my eyes to several things. The Prince William County is one of the most diverse and beautiful counties in this country, comprised of a broad swath of peoples hailing from various cultures, communities, and walks of life. For our children, equality isn't enough because we aren't all equal. Our kids to come to the table, the academic table that is, bearing different strengths, different talents, different struggles, and different needs, and they require a specialized approach to ensure their success. That no two schools are alike, and they too have different strengths, struggles, and needs. That the resources necessary to enhance those strengths, to mitigate those struggles, and to meet those needs are inadequate and inequitably distributed. Just ask the teachers. I've heard a nasty rumor that many of them are the lowest-paid teachers in Northern Virginia, yet they can attest to having spent their own money out of their own pockets to ensure that their students have the supplies and resources necessary to enable their own academic success. These past few years, our community has had to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19, political divisiveness, inflation, and an influx of refugees taking up residence in Prince William County from war-torn countries, and all of these struggles trickle down onto the shoulders of our children. This council can't do this alone, and we can't just focus on equity in Prince William County schools. The success of our children is often dependent on what is happening at home and in our communities. Parents need to be a part of the solution, and that means including, enriching the relationships between parents and teachers, and including parents in the learning and decision processes. That also means taking steps to raise community awareness of student challenges and the programs and resources to address them, and this needs to be done in all represented languages and formats. What it boils down to is that there is still so much more work to be done, and this committee is just one small step in the right direction. I hope that we can continue to garner broader involvement and investment from the rest of our community in ensuring that our children have the tools necessary to be contributing members to our community. I want to thank you for your time this evening. I want to thank you to Member Wall for the opportunity to serve on this committee. Thank you to Dr. Brown and to my selfless colleagues on the council, and Mr. Tom Weed for just joining us. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Jen Donnelly.
My name is Jen Donnelly, and my address is on file. I'm here to discuss Agenda Item 17.03, Prevailing Wage Resolution. While I commend the effort and idea of paying contractors more for their work, there are a few issues that haven't been addressed. First, and most importantly, it will increase the capital improvement budget by 10% to 20%. Not only is this increase not budgeted for, but since the school board cannot raise funds via taxes, then it must be made up for by either taking money from other budget items, cutting back on capital improvement projects, or issuing more bonds or a combination thereof. The five-year CIP budget estimates are approximately $1.4 billion for new construction and renovation. A 20% increase will be $280 million over five years, or $56 million per year, enough to build almost two new high schools or six elementary schools. This increase in waste will compound over time. Secondly, at a time when we aren't paying teachers or school bus drivers enough to hire the needed staff, this would likely use up monies that could otherwise go towards increasing pay for bus drivers and teachers. At the very least, it looks unseemly to senselessly waste resources. The 2021 to 2022 transportation budget had a decrease in full-time employees of 22 and decrease of $4.3 million. The 2021-22 regular education budget had a decrease of about 10 full-time teachers with an increase cost of about $10.3 million. That $56 million a year could increase teacher salaries by about $11,500 per year. I understand that the entire $56 million couldn't go towards salary since most of it would come from bond sales, but why would we look to spend any more and gain nothing? There's no guarantee that any of the increases would go, end up going to Prince William County-based contractors or students that graduate from Prince William County schools. Besides, PWCS does not exist as a jobs program. To quote Stephen Moore in regard to one of his regular conversations with Milton Friedman, Milton recalled traveling to an Asian country in the 1960s and visiting a work site where a new canal was being built. He asked why there were so few machines. The government bureaucrat explained, "You don't understand. This is a jobs program," to which Milton replied, "Oh, I thought you were trying to build canal. If you wanted jobs built, you should have given the workers spoons, not shovels. Are we trying to build schools or create a jobs program?"
Okay, thank you. At this time, that will conclude Citizen Comment time, and we will be moving on to, where am I here? Yep, sorry about that. 1401, the Office of Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, the annual school calendar. And tonight, the 2023-24 Annual School Calendar is on for action. The calendar was presented for information on the November 2nd meeting. To recap, a public poll was sent out in September. We had over 9,000 respondents. A majority chose option 3, with the votes coming from 45% of parents, 53% of staff, 44% of students. At this time, we need a motion. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'm with the Prince William County School Board. Approve Option 3 for the 2023-2024 Annual School Calendar.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Zargarpur.
Well, I did talk to some teachers lately, and they expressed concern that we don't always align our workdays with the end of the quarter. And someone's going to have to address this a little bit real quick. Did that happen before this particular calendar a little bit better, or?
I'm going to call Ms. Rita Goss, our Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, to address the questions that you might have based on the presentation that was brought forward on the calendar.
So, good evening. Mrs. Zargarpur, you may be referring to the workday and the conference day that were this year on October 31st, on that day at the end of this quarter. So we don't have another day like that that would be occurring. Our workdays do occur in the same, at the same intervals they've typically occurred, at the end of the first quarter, and then again, we have that, those workdays and conference days at the end of the second quarter at the semester break.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that our employees have heard that, so, thank you.
Ms. Wall.
I don't have a question. I just had a couple of comments. I know Option 3, that starts the latest in August for teachers and ends earliest for students, so I think a lot of people like that, and that the plurality of residents, respondents to the survey chose Option 3. And I do understand the desire for a full two weeks at winter break. I do like that about our current calendar. I know if we go with Option 3, there's a concern that students will take off before that break, and teachers may do that as well. I've had a few people reach out to me about that, and I know it's always a challenge with travel plans and schedules, you know, approaching that winter holiday. But I do feel that days within the school year are more productive in general than final days at the year's end. So one thing I really do like about this Option 3 is that it has the earliest end in June. To that point, to maximize those quality instruction days, I would actually be interested in future calendars moving even earlier so that they ended closer to the end of May, around that Memorial Day weekend, or maybe the first few days in June. The advantage that I see to that is that we have more of our instructional days in the school year as opposed to after, you know, quite a bit after the ending of state testing and academic testing like AP and IB and other things like that. I also fielded a number of concerns about the number of days off during the year. In our calendar, we do have a lot of days off. I know why we have, I know why we have most of those days off. Do we have too many days off? That is a question I have. I know for working parents, it can be hard to find childcare for multiple one-off days, and many don't have so many personal days off from their jobs to stay home for those random holidays. And it does put pressure on the budget to pay babysitter costs for those additional days, but on the flip side, those additional days are there, some of them for cultural and religious holiday reasons, holidays and other reasons, matching up with a wide variety of backgrounds that we have in Prince William County. So I guess my point is, in all of these decisions, they are hard precisely because a decision to someone's benefit may be a decision to another's detriment. And so it is with concern and recognition that there's no easy answer so far on our calendar that I'm voting today, but I do appreciate those who have reached out to me to express their viewpoint on the calendar options and number of days we have, the number of holidays that we have, and our start, our start time, the length of the school year, starting now further and further into August, but kind of still ending into June. So I'm open to future considerations and comments on this, but I appreciate the work that went into the calendar, the work that went into the development of the calendars by the calendar committee and everybody else involved.
Ms. Jackson.
I also appreciate the work that went into the calendar, and I just have one notation that really doesn't pertain so much to the calendar as, it's just like feedback that I received since then that I just wanted to, it's just flex days, and then if we're adding days at the end of the year for planning, which is def, which is needed, that maybe at some point, we could revisit flex days, just advocate that point. Thank you.
Okay, please vote. Oh, Mr. Welk?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be succinct. I've addressed a number of concerns with the administration on the premise in which the calendar is made, the balance of the days, the balance of the number of instructional hours, and I think, you know, trying to find that right balance is where I struggle with this, and so because of that, I'm gonna vote no on whatever calendar we pick.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Interesting. I just, again, for information, I want to remind the public that this is a combination of efforts for the board for approval and our input, but also for the division because the calendar, the operational side of it is not something that the board makes decisions on, but it's collaborative in nature because the planning of the calendar is a collaborative process between all stakeholders. And I just want to say thank you for all of those who put forth the time and effort and responded to our survey. I would ask for those who are made aware, who are aware this evening this is vote is taking place, to take this opportunity, if you know someone who is not aware, to share that with them because generally, we hear at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year about people's vacation and travel plans. We do our best to spread the information and news, but a calendar, as far as planning, strategic planning goes, anyway, from a family aspect, I can speak for myself, is something we generally do at the beginning and the end of the year, and we approve the calendar in the middle of the year. So if, once this motion carries through and we move on, just try to be mindful and remind a friend that this is the time of year that it's done. Hopefully, we'll get more input in years to come, but also people can have time to accommodate their plans for the summer and for next year. Thank you.
Ms. Jesse.
I support the calendar. However, I-
However, I, I express my concern that, that certain employees will be required during the holidays to either take time or to justify why they need to be off. And I, I'm not sure how that can be adjusted down the road, but I think it's unfair that certain people have to justify taking that day off before, uh, work more days during that holiday period, but I support the calendar. Thank you.
Okay, please vote.
The vote is six yes, one no, Wilk, one absent, Ralston. Motion passed.
Moving on to student representative matters. Tonight's student representative, Chance Williams, a senior at Forest Park High School, is joining us on the dais. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Good evening. As a student representative to the school board, I always want to ensure I bring the concerns of the Prince William County students to your attention. Tonight, I want to begin by providing the board with an opinion on school safety from the point of view of a student in Prince William County schools. It is unfortunate that as a student, when I enter a classroom for the first time, one of the first things I think about is an escape route. Violence in schools is becoming unfortunately common and nearly expected. As a student in Prince William County, I don't worry about my safety because the county is a dangerous place. I worry because the country is a dangerous place. It is the right of students and staff to feel safe in a place in which they must spend most of their time. While I don't believe we are at a point where we need to begin considering metal detectors and heavy security for daily school use, I do believe something has to change, not only to give our students peace of mind, but to give their parents and the Prince William County Schools community peace of mind as well. I believe if we could do something to alleviate some of that fear, we would have done the county as a whole a great favor. A suggestion from students and teachers would be the possible use of metal detectors at games and sporting events, which would also grant students access to some sort of bag again. As due to fear in previous events, we currently cannot even have clear bags. We could also implement peer support and community engagement with local law enforcement with the support of the Student Senate and student leadership at our schools to increase safety awareness. As we've recently seen at two universities these past few days, we must work towards safer schools. We send our love to UVA with hopes of change to bring an end to gun violence. Along with security and safety, I want to speak on its effects on our low-income and majority-minority schools. Majority-minority is when one or more racial or ethnic minority relative to the country's population make up a majority of the local population. When acts of violence occur at these majority-minority schools, it reflects negatively on the students, typically black and brown. The rumors echo throughout the county associating these schools with the word ghetto. My middle school, Potomac Middle School, was majority-minority. Before I enrolled and since I've left, many students and staff still associate Potomac Middle School with the words ghetto and prison, simply because the school is majority-minority. No violent events occurred at the school, it was just a precedent. Ms. Rachel Preston, principal of Potomac Middle School, has done a phenomenal job of advocating the great students, staff, and activities at Potomac Middle School. I have no doubts the word ghetto and bad school will soon be erased as something associated with Potomac Middle School due to her leadership. The board recognizes the importance of diversity as it leads to amazing things in our county, but we must also make sure that our majority-minority schools are given the same view as any other school in the county. It is unfair then when these students attend these schools, they are branded with negative cliches. I want our board, our staff, our parents, and students to challenge these stereotypes so that people know all schools in Prince William County schools are launching thriving futures. To zoom in on what a diverse student may experience in the classroom, I would like to address the presentation of learning concepts and objectives in the classroom. In a previous history course on a test, I was asked to justify the institution of slavery. This is during the height of the pandemic, when many were debating the Voting Rights Act, protesting police brutality, and whether the history of various cultures should be taught in classrooms at all. In English courses, I've heard teachers use racial slurs when reading literature. There is no reason for these words to show up in our classroom, even if they are in our required reading. Further, when said by our educators, it can create a very uncomfortable environment. These words may have their place on the pages of books, but there is no academically essential reason teachers should ever utter these words in our classrooms. While slavery, the Holocaust, and the history of our indigenous Americans are absolutely necessary, we have to be mindful of what we're teaching, why we're teaching, and to whom we're teaching. Many topics are uncomfortable, but often, delivery is just as important as content. I am pleased to have learned that Prince William County Schools is aware in addressing this in our classrooms. One of the goals outlined by the student representatives at the beginning of the year was sensitivity training for our teachers, to give them the ability to know what words, phrases, and questions could possibly, excuse me, could possibly be best used or avoided in the classroom. By providing teachers with this skill, we save them from a possible misunderstanding or offense that could occur that would make any of our students uncomfortable. The overall goal should be to create classrooms that create a clear path for learning and dialogue, even when it is uncomfortable. The Hard History Cohorts, a program devoted to training our history teachers on how to teach sensitive subjects, and cultural competency training, which helps our teachers learn about different cultures, are amazing resources the county has provided. With these trainings and continued lessons, we are creating a more inclusive classroom that promotes learning without harsh words and phrases. The effects of diversity on the county are incredibly positive, and it's clear the board is trying to develop the presence of diversity more. At the high school level, the presence of different diverse clubs, such as our Black Student Unions and our Muslim Student Associations, provide safe spaces for minority students at schools. Many schools host a multicultural night to highlight the different cultures and countries represented. There are so many different ways the county is highlighting diversity amongst the students. I would like to encourage the board to view it themselves. There are many different forms that diversity in the county takes, and I'm nearly certain that there is something the board can stop by and view, such as the Forest Park Black Student Union, which meets Thursday. To close, I would like to highlight a point from my previous remarks. During my last speech, I spoke about the robotics program and the issue it's facing. I would like to thank the board for truly listening in that moment, as it has been a struggle not just for our high school robotics teams, but our middle and elementary school teams levels, at middle school and elementary school level teams as well. I encourage our board to revisit a robotics practice, speak to the coaches, and check in during competition season. Robotics practice in competitions may not seem as interesting as football, but I promise it's just as much work and just as much fun. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chance Williams. Very good. Moving on to superintendent's time, Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I want to open this evening expressing our support for the University of Virginia. We are devastated by the senseless tragedy that occurred Sunday night, cutting short the promising futures of three student athletes. Our hearts go out to their families, friends, and the entire UVA community. Tragic incidents like this are heart-wrenching, and our families and community continue to be concerned about safety. Later this evening, you will receive a presentation on safety and security efforts for the school division. In honor of today, America Recycles Day, I wish to again congratulate our Virginia Naturally Schools. Since the school board adopted a sustainability resolution in 2020, we have earned several accolades. We've saved over $65 million and reduced greenhouse gases by 260,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide. These awards recognize the vital work of the Energy Management and Sustainability Team and the environmentally conscious direction of Prince William County Public Schools. We are dedicated and committed to reducing our carbon footprint now so that we may ensure our students inherit a clean and sustainable environment for years to come. As a reminder, schools and offices will be closed November 23rd through the 25th in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. I would like to celebrate two Prince William County state champions. Brentsville District High School cheer earned the VHSL 2022 Class III State Championship. Colgan High School cheer earned the VHSL 2022 Class VI State Championship. We look forward to celebrating their success at a future school board meeting. I wish the rest of our student athletes and their respective schools the best of luck in the playoffs, represent PWCS well in competition and sportsmanship both on and off the field. During the season of Thanksgiving, many of our local schools devote their time to collecting clothes, food, toys, books, and more for our community. Please reach out to your local school's parent liaison and find out how you can donate your support, resources, or how you can support through financial charity. I would now like to transition to our presentation on diversity, equity, and inclusion. As educators, we must use our talents and focus our resources to lead with equity as a moral imperative so that every child succeeds and functions as an informed, engaged, and productive citizen of our community. Success is not when some, most, or a majority of students achieve. Success is when every student realizes their full potential. Equity is for all students, and we must consider their unique strengths and needs to accomplish our goal of launching thriving futures for every student in Prince William County Public Schools. We are looking closely at our performance data and implementing strategies to ensure we're addressing the needs of each student. Prince William County Schools is committed to academic success and equitable access to high-quality instruction at every school. Before I introduce our presenter on PWCS's efforts to strengthen diversity, equity, and inclusion, I would like to personally thank every single member of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity, which is a representative group of the PWCS community. Thank you for your, for collaboratively engaging in this important work and for bringing your voice, your talent, your expertise, and your time to ensure that every single student has a fair shot to succeed. At this time, I wish to welcome Dr. Lacretia Brown, Chief Equity Officer, to provide the board with a presentation on the PWCS Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Framework. The Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity and Dr. Brown's entire office have been hard at work the entire year to build out a framework for the school division in alignment with our strategic plan. Dr. Brown will also be joined by Principal Ferrera of Battlefield High School. Dr. Brown?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairwoman Jackson, school board members, and Dr. McDade. It is absolutely my pleasure to be here presenting, one calendar year after I started in the division and launched this very important work. Joining me tonight in the presentation, as you heard from Dr. McDade, are members of our Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, members of our SACE Council, and other members from our community, Principal Ferrera. We'll start our presentation by giving you an overview of some highlight, highlighted discussion points that we'll touch upon tonight. We'll highlight a number of key milestones in a historical timeline, understanding that equity started in Prince William County some years back. And I definitely want to extend gratitude to my colleague Denise Hubner, who led this effort prior to my joining the Prince William County Schools family. We'll anchor this conversation in our strategic plan, Vision 2025: Launching Thriving Futures, introduce some language to level set, and have, begin to establish a shared understanding of what we're talking about when we use the terms diversity, equity, and inclusion. We'll give our, an opportunity to some of our SACE officers to say another word if they'd like to. Again, their leadership, as Dr. McDade highlighted, being instrumental in advancing this work as well. And we will then move into introducing our DEI strategy, which is anchored in four domains that you'll see later in the presentation. We'll close with giving an implementation update and highlighting our next steps. With regard to historical milestones, we want to extend gratitude to our Equity Council that was officially memorialized back in 2019, members of which are here this evening. That group collaborated to develop the division's first equity statement, which was unanimously adopted, I believe, back in spring 2021. Our new superintendent joined the county school system July or summer 2021, following with the implementation of the Chief Equity Office in fall of 2021, one year ago today. Then, significant to this work was the launching of the strategic plan where diversity, equity, and inclusion are prominently placed and well-positioned throughout all of the commitment areas. Our budget for FY '23, which included strategic investments to advance this work across the division as well, and for the moment that we're here this evening, launching our framework again fall 2022. We always begin with highlighting the presence of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our vision, our mission, and our core values, and also in our strategic commitment areas, learning and achievement for all, positive climate and culture, family and community engagement, and organizational coherence. In addition to anchoring this work in our strategic plan, there are aspects of this work that we anchor in external drivers, which speak to our federal laws and regulations, which support parts of the work that we are responsible for, and you'll hear about later in our presentation from other team members. Beginning here with level setting, we have some working definitions that are included in our strategic plans, glossary of terms, definition for diversity, equity, and inclusion. But beyond that, no DEI effort is, is worth its, its weight if it doesn't include student voice. So we'll pause at this time to hear a moment or a little bit from our students and what they, how they define and experience and expect us to lead DEI on their behalf.
I think diversity means that I have, I'm represented in any field that's important to me.
I think if everybody wants to learn in a successful space and be successful in their environment, I think it's important to feel represented.
Diversity to me is representation. That means to include various different social, ethnic, and cultural groups.
It's giving opportunities necessary for people of different backgrounds and accommodating them in a way specific to them so everyone would have the chance to have an equal opportunity.
Equity means I have the resources, opportunities, and support that I need to succeed.
Inclusion is the appreciation of diversity in action.
Inclusion to me is an effort to include different social groups or ethnic groups in a certain space. This can be socioeconomic status, racial, or ethnic groups.
Being open to anyone and any personality is inclusion, and I think those go hand-in-hand with diversity and equity.
The most precious customer is the student, so you just want to make sure that everybody's having a good experience that allows them to be successful.
It establishes a greater cultural interconnectivity, consciousness, and awareness.
As long as I feel included and I feel as if I belong and the teachers are there for me, me specifically, I'll achieve more academically, and it impacts me socially, too.
So we've included the perspective of our students, and we've heard the charge. They need us to advance this work in a strategic and intentional way to support not only their sense of belonging, but their achievement and their pathway toward excellence. So when we think and we talk about equity and equality, it's important that we understand the terms that we're talking about. We understand, as we've heard from Dr. McDade and from many of our leaders who've been before you, prior to me, equity and equality are not the same. But more importantly, equity is not about reducing qualifications. It is not about a handout. It is about providing a fair shot for each and every student, regardless of how they present. It's about valuing who they are, how they show up, whatever their cultural capital is, and giving that academic validation that they need to actually thrive in our schools. The graphic that's depicted here for you is a visualization of how, when we work together to advance equity and equality and adequacy and inclusion and diversity, we level the playing field and give all of our students our access and opportunity to teaching and learning in Prince William County schools. So a little bit of context around this work. A few weeks prior, you all were given a presentation on the state of schools. And to give you an example of what this means in practical application for our schools, we're sharing here tonight a snapshot of data that was shared that reflects our student representation in academically rigorous courses. So this is a depiction of our students and their representation in AP, IB, and other advanced courses. You can see on the left-hand side of the screen, if you're facing this way, what the level or standard of excellence has been, how it has been set for a particular student group. So the black line represents the target, but you see there are groups that have set the bar of excellence high. That doesn't mean that our other students shouldn't get the same opportunities to strive for that standard of excellence. And so we have some groups that haven't realized that standard of excellence through under-representation. We have other groups that are approaching parity. But again, we want to provide re- But again, we want to provide resources and supports to level the floor and thereby elevate the ceiling for all. That means not taking away, supporting the excellence that's there, but making it the standard for all to achieve. Another example of this work and what it means in practical application will be shared with you tonight with my colleague and teammate, Principal Ferrera. We are launching, and many of you have heard, about equal-opportunity schools. We also wanted to give him an opportunity to share some anecdotal information and context on how this initiative that we are launching at the division level is helping at his school level. And we also want to highlight that the opportunity gaps that we're able to address are significant in reducing achievement gaps. We cannot have a standard of excellence if we have not given a fair shot and a fair opportunity for all of our students. So I'll ask Mr. Ferrera to join me.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Good evening, Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade, School Board members. Happy Thanksgiving to you all. I was really honored to be asked to come and share a little bit about my school. Anytime I get a chance to talk about Battlefield High School, I'm happy to do so. So Battlefield High School, we're really fortunate. We have a very high-achieving school and a long history of very high academic success. That said, the strategic plan from the board and Dr. McDade's leadership has challenged us to go deeper than the surface level. And as we can make our continuous improvement plan, look at areas of growth and opportunities where we can grow. And access to advanced coursework in our school is one of those areas that we are focusing on this year. We've identified the gaps in accessing advanced courses among our student groups, which includes race, special education, English learners, socioeconomic status, and those are things we are addressing in our CIP. And one of those things is the Equal Opportunity Schools program that I believe most Prince William County High Schools are participating in. Research indicates that students who take at least one AP course in high school have a significantly lower dropout rate when they're in college. And knowing that, we should see more students accessing this coursework at our school when we factor in that at Battlefield High School, a very large percentage of students attend college. So we would like to see access to advanced coursework increase across the board so that students are fully prepared for the rigor of college work. Working with equal-opportunity schools will allow us to identify students who should be taking advanced courses, but for whatever reason are not taking advantage of those programs. And it will also provide our school with feedback to the barriers that may exist that prevent students from taking those options. Ultimately, the goal is we want to make sure students and families are connected with resources and empowered by information to choose courses that align with the students' post-secondary goals. And once students are surveyed, the first step is going to be a survey that really will give us a broad look, but also on an individual level, what every student in our school needs. And once we do that, our leadership and instructional teams will be able to take actionable next steps to make sure that this is all happening. So I'm really excited to do this work with our school and our community and make sure that our students who are college-bound are fully prepared by having access to the skills and the instruction that they learn in these advanced courses. So thank you for letting me come speak to you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We also highlighted at the top of this presentation the instrumental work of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity. We do have officers that were newly elected for this school year. And at this time, if there are any one of them that want to come and give a quick little snapshot of their time that they've been working in this council, I reserve some space here with the slide. But if you don't, that's fine, because I know y'all signed up for citizen comment time. So if you'd like to, we can. But is there anything that you guys would like to add? We have our chair and vice chair here, along with our secretary, Mr. Justin Kane. So I think we're thumbs up here. But the slide before you just commemorates and extends gratitude to this council, which is comprised of 20 members that include board-appointed representation, PWCS employees, and other community members. We meet monthly, and we collaborate and engage in meaningful working sessions so that we align the mission and vision of this council with the mission and vision of the division and the strategic plan. One of the focuses of our work last year was to really sit and talk about what do we mean in Prince William County Schools when we say diversity, equity, and inclusion? We sat down with a lot of the research, and we came up with some common themes. And those themes emerged as four areas: access and opportunity, resource equity, communication and engagement, as well as intercultural competence and inclusion. As you can see reflected on the screen, we used some of those guiding questions that are identified there for you to prompt the discussion and have continued sustainable discussions over the entire year last year. And once we decided that these were our areas and what we meant when we're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion, then we had to talk about, how do we know when we see it? What should we be looking at? And so what's reflected for you on this slide are data elements that we will be using to be able to gauge our progress in advancing this work through the different strategies that we will be implementing as educational leaders in the division. So we'll be looking at student achievement data, State of Schools report. We won't be looking at other data. DEI must be embedded in the core organizational processes that are already happening in the division. And we allow the themes to emerge for us to triage based on what's happening in the school, not on what we think should happen, but what's actually data-proven to be happening in the division. And then lastly, as we move through those conversations, we began to talk about key performance indicators in anticipation of the launch of the strategic plan. Again, how do we know what we're doing is working? So we want to identify, and we have identified collaboratively and collectively, what data elements, when it comes to numbers and percents, we'll be looking at to be able to gauge how well the division is doing. And we'll have a continuous improvement cycle that will inform our conversations and make sure that there's vertical and horizontal alignment in this work as we move forward. So here is our framework. Thanks to our comms department for taking our conceptual ideas and design elements and comprising them, if you will, into this framework that you'll see as our sub-brand as we advance this work. So when we're talking about DEI in Prince William County Schools, we know that there are four components: access and opportunity, resource equity, communication and engagement that's strategic and targeted directly to our populations that may not be as involved or informed as we would expect them to be, and then intercultural competence and inclusion. One slide, just to level set on this role and the position that I serve in. The title of the position is Chief Equity Officer. It is informed from the research. We want to highlight what the work that this role is responsible for is comprised of. So first and foremost, a Chief Equity Officer is an organizational change management specialist. This work doesn't survive if it is not embedded in the organizational processes, as I've said previously. So therefore, it's not the lone diversity trainer. DEI is still a capability and a responsibility of every leader in Prince William County Schools, but we are here to support at all levels in all priority areas. The Chief Equity Officer advises the superintendent and works latterly with my executive colleagues and peers, but also has staffing to support out in our school sites and within our departments as well, within the operations side. But again, more importantly, what you see depicted for you are those prioritized organizational areas and processes: continuous improvement. So we push in and we support at all levels in ensuring that we are including DEI in that work. Our budget development process. You've heard about the Equitable Budgeting Task Force that we've launched. That is work where we're being strategic and intentional about advancing this work from a financial perspective. Policy and administrative regulations, provisions. Maintenance and elimination. Making sure that our policies align with our strategic plan and align with where we're going, our North Star. And more importantly, within teaching and learning, instructional leadership. So you'll hear from members of my team later of exactly what that looks like in practical application and operationalizing this work for our community. And here, I'd like to introduce our brand-new Director of Diversity and Equity, who will serve as a tool and resource for our schools and our teaching and learning staff as we embed and advance this work on the academic side of the house.
Good evening. I'm very, very excited to serve the PWCS community as the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I am a PWCS graduate from a few years back. I am proud to say that I am a parent of a PWCS graduate, as well as three current PWCS students. As you view our presentation here and you look at our framework, you'll notice that there are currently five bands. We're in the process of adding a sixth band that we will be focusing our work in. In particular, this framework was developed to address the achievement gaps that exist within Prince William County Public Schools. By intentionally embedding the DEI framework into academics, we will target the gaps that exist. There are six main bands, as I mentioned previously, that we will focus our work on in our school communities to improve the outcomes for all students. These six bands are instructional leadership, classroom evaluation, social-emotional learning, resource management, chronic absenteeism, which is being added, as well as family, academic, and community engagement. We're collaborating with school district leaders to offer our support through an equity lens. We are teaming with school leaders to strengthen the instructional corps by joining their instructional rounds. We've launched our Equal Opportunity Schools partnership in 11 high schools to date. And this is, again, to improve access and opportunity to advanced courses for all students in Prince William County Public Schools. Working with the Restorative Practices Planning Team on training, developing, and implementing, we will have a focus on academic and social-emotional learning. Collaborating with school and district leaders on how we manage our resources by utilizing an equitable funding model. We'll pay dividends across all areas that our framework is embedded in. Chronic absenteeism has become a prevalent issue in Prince William County Public Schools, and will be a major focus of our department. Accordingly, I'm very excited to say that we have hired a Supervisor of Family and Community Engagement, Dr. CJ Atkins. And she is with us this evening to give an overview of her role within the DEI department.
Good evening. The purpose of the role that has been afforded to our office, which I'm extremely excited about, is to centralize and coordinate our family academic engagement. And that's seen, of course, in Commitment Area 3, but also in 1, 2, and 4 of our division's strategic plan. And I will collaborate with our family and community academic engagement specialists and school administrators to do a few things. We want to elevate family and academic community engagement through instructional knowledge, collaboration, and strategic school-level initiatives. We want to embed family academic and community practices in our core business and key organizational practices. And we want to build all families' capacity to navigate the educational process successfully for their students. And we also want to collaborate with schools to elevate the work that they're already doing for family knowledge on the positive effects of daily school attendance and student academic success, and also enhancing resource equity. It's not about taking away or saying what they're not doing, but it's elevating what they have in place to make sure that there is access for all families so that all students can be successful. Thank you.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I am Tanisha Holland, Equity and Employee Relations Administrator. And this evening, I am also representing our department's Equity and Student Relations Administrator, Equity Investigators, DEI Specialist, and Administrative Assistant. On the current slide posted is our Discrimination and Harassment Compliance Framework graphic, beginning with prevention to reporting, investigation, decision-making, final disposition, and appeals. This represents the full scale of our discrimination and harassment complaint process. All stages in our process are grounded in federal and state laws and regulations, executive orders, our school division's policies and regulations, and strategic plan. DEI's primary objectives are twofold. First, to proactively raise awareness in the PWCS community to prevent discrimination and harassment allegations under Titles 6, 7, and 9, and foster a climate and culture where everyone feels like they belong. And second, to ensure that all reports of discrimination and harassment are investigated and resolved in a timely fashion and unbiased manner. Collaboratively, our team has been laser-focused in developing and implementing the following: prevention materials and trainings for students, staff, and other PWCS community members; streamlined reporting process and provide additional resources that are accessible on the PWCS Launchpad and public website; partnered with a third-party vendor to ensure a more seamless and efficient process to managing all discrimination and harassment cases; develop standard operating procedures to ensure consistent practices are followed; and hiring three new investigators who specialize in DEI investigations.
Thank you, Tanisha. Now we'll move forward with an implementation update. What we have depicted for you on the screen is a set of action steps and tasks that have been completed during Year 1 of implementation. We've arranged these action steps in four, five areas. First, beginning with office design and development, with this being a new role to the organization, making sure that any corresponding roles that were implemented had the appropriate direct reporting lines, positional structures, so that we could keep workflows moving and not interfere with the routine organizational operations. So in other words, making sure the organization could absorb the roles that we are introducing here to support this work. Within access and opportunity, we've launched, as you've heard, the Equal Opportunity Schools Initiative. We have a cohort, or Year 1 cohort, of 11 schools, with our second cohort launching next school year with the remaining high schools, three of them. We've worked to develop and identify the key components of a DEI consultancy protocol, which we'll use with our leaders at all the levels to ensure that we're building capacity for leading DEI work and extending the DEI arm, if you will, throughout the other departments and offices in the division. We facilitated initial conversations with our school parent liaisons. We've repurposed the former CARES leads to support family academic engagement and embed the responsive needs of our families into that role. We've also held a Latino Business Community Leader Roundtable to basically hear from the representatives and community leads of one of our most vulnerable populations. What do their students need? And how can we partner on support to bring this group up to that standard of excellence that we are striving for? With regard to communication and engagement, we continuously work with community organizations, particularly the NAACP, the Prince William County Student Human Relations Council, and other national and regional partners that support our work, particularly in the area of Title IX, as we build awareness and prevention for our students and employees. We've also worked to begin to establish a baseline of where do our leaders measure on their leadership for DEI. And so that work was really... And so that work was really well-supported, and we'll be using that work to support how we build capacity for our leaders in advancing this work as well. So for next steps, moving into Year Two, we'll begin to conduct school equity visits, but again, we will make sure that those visits are not invasive, but rather able to be absorbed into another organizational process. We will begin to revamp and have conversations about our equity scorecard and aligning that with our strategic plan and the DEI work that we've presented to you here this evening. We will establish a PWCS DEI social media presence, beginning with our website, our Intranet, and other social media platforms in collaboration with our comms department. And again, we'll move into launching and embedding this DEI framework into the routine operations of the division. We'll also co-lead and support a divisional policy review to determine what policies do we need to revise to support our strategic plan and all of the good work that's happening across the division and all of our departments, centering equitable and inclusive language and practices within the core of all of those policies and administrative regulations. We'll continue to advance community engagement, but adding a layer of outreach, meeting people where they are and understanding that there are barriers to engagement, traditional engagement for our families and communities. So how do we remove those and revamp and reclaim the narrative for this work as we seek to bring our families closer to center? And then lastly, taking the PWCS organizational DEI baseline work, as I said earlier, and beginning to operationalize that and use that to support our leaders on the teaching and learning side and the operational side. That concludes our presentation for this evening.
Mr. Chairman, we'll open it up to any questions that the board, or comments that the board might have for the team.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first say how much I appreciate this presentation. For this board member, I went from advocating, trying to convince people what equity and equality and DEI work was and why it was important, to sitting here in this moment, I am extremely proud of our school division. I am extremely proud to have been integral in that advocacy to get this rocket launched now that we're in Thriving Futures. It is so impactful to see this work no longer siloed in our division or held through book clubs, or the brunt of it borne on certain leaders in certain schools and certain central office staff, to now being in a responsibility for all of us throughout the division, and then extending that invitation into the community to come back and work with us to get this work done for the understanding and good of all. I think that prior to this presentation, the primary chatter about DEI work is not reflected in our academic or our operational, not reflected in academics or operation when we talk about it. And having received this presentation, being able to explain to the public and our school family and community that it's not a matter of just simply providing, like the bike example earlier, someone said, a ten-speed versus a bike with training wheels. It's an integrative approach at all levels. We all have to be on the same page, providing our community with what, the definition of what it is we mean when we say a term, how that's going to be applicable throughout our entire system, how this approach is at every single layer, and everybody is responsible. I cannot say that enough because it matters. Integration matters when it comes to DEI work. Being on the same page and having the same level of understanding matters. And I think that this presentation really was able to visually demonstrate, and you were able to articulate with, through yourself and your team, the fact that it's not just simply about race. It's not simply about socioeconomic status. It's about all of it. It's about the way that we think. It's about the way that we interact and deal with each other, the materials that we use. All of it matters, and all of it has to fit together in order for all of us to succeed together, because that's the goal, for all of us to come aboard. This is particularly important to me because that's something I say all the time, public school is for all, and it's our duty to ensure that all of our students have the capability to learn and grow and progress. For me personally, being a Prince William County Schools grad in a different era and a different time, not having a lot of this work represented in my academic career, was impactful. Not being able to go take an AP test because my family didn't necessarily have the funds, even though I took the AP course, to be able to take the test, or having to come up with additional funds to go take the PSAT multiple times, where now that's something we do standard for everyone. Seeing individuals in the workplace who look similar to myself, which I did not see growing up very often. All of these things fit. It's not just one single lens to which to view, we view our academic or our school community. And I appreciate the fact that so much time was spent explaining that. You've come a long way in one year. In my mind, when I looked at this presentation and said, "Oh, we started this in 2019," I have been advocating for so long, I forgot that this is a newly-approved budget position. You've laid the groundwork and the foundation to get us where we are in your role, leaning on what was already in our existing school division, because I think that's also important. There was an existing foundation, and the work was being done, just was not integrated at all levels, right? We're in a space in our society and culture where we're shifting from each in its own box to recognizing that every box touches. So it makes a difference what I do. It makes a difference what you do. To all of us, it's impactful. So I appreciate you highlighting that. I love the fact that there's so much student focus in this from multiple angles, not just how the students want to see themselves represented, but their voice is present in this work, and it's noticeable. That is also impactful because I know that when we give students ownership of their academic progress, they succeed as well, and they participate more, and that makes us a better school division. I could go on and on forever, so I'm going to stop and just say I greatly appreciate this. I look forward to regular updates on our progress, which I know you will provide, not only as at the board, but to our school community. I want to thank my representative to the council. I want to also thank Dr. McDavid for continuing this work in her administration and really making it a seamless integration into how we operate as a division and how it aligns with our strategic plan. It all matters, and I greatly appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Ms. Jessie?
I really, this is very emotional for me because I've lived this, and I've been in this school system. I've been in Chicago at a hospital for disturbed and emotionally disturbed children. I've worked with what were called retarded children, and I lived that life myself personally. So when people say, "Why are you on this board?" I came on this board primarily to affect student learning. That's why I came on this board. And to see this committee where you are right now, it's been worth the wait. And I think I said during the two-by-two to Dr. McDavid, "What was she doing? When has she got up for that?" And now I know because it has been worth the wait. You have given a presentation that covers everything. Today, I was on a webinar with Future Kings, and the title of the webinar was Changing the Narrative About Black and Latino Boys. And Chance here tonight talked about various student groups, and I have worked with those kinds of kids all my life. I was one of those kids. And so when you talk about changing the narrative, the belief that all kids can learn at high levels, it's very difficult to change how people see people. It's not about books. It's not really about instructional strategies. It's whether or not you think that child has the ability to learn at high levels. And I know that Dr. McDavid has lived that same life. I wanted to go back to Slide Nine, if you don't mind, because it was mentioned earlier. I think it was Slide Eight. Sorry, Slide Eight. This one. You know, I've seen this in various forms, and someone tonight talked about giving up what you had to give up in order to achieve equity. I went to South Carolina State College, and I'm giving away my age because I was involved in the marches, and we marched at South Carolina State to integrate a bowling alley. Now, keep in mind, none of us bowled because we weren't allowed in bowling alleys, and we really didn't want to just integrate the bowling alley. We wanted to make a statement. And when I look at this, I thought about the difference, the equality. We were searching for equality. We wanted access to that bowling alley. But having gotten access to that bowling alley, in this third slide, the third part of this presentation where you talk about equity, if we had been allowed in the bowling alley, we would not be able to bowl at the same level that the students, the white students had been in that bowling alley all their lives. But we had the ability to bowl. All we needed was practice and an opportunity and the belief that we could really achieve that. I've been on this board for 10 years, and Rita Goss will tell you that every time I ask the four, same four questions, which are: Are the children learning? How do you know? What are you going to do about the ones that are not? And what are you going to do about those who already know? She can repeat it. And it's really, it's a very simple concept. It's not about whether or not they were taught, it's whether or not they learned, and how, what are the results of that? How do you know? And what are you going to do about the kids who are below grade level, but more importantly, what are you going to do about the ones that don't have access? And the fact that you brought in a principal, and he shared one of the things about high levels of learning that I've learned over my life and my experience, is that you have to share the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I am so appreciative to this board and to Dr. McDavid and to you, Mr. Kresha Brown. She is a SARA, by the way. But that's not why she's great. She's great because of who she is. But I just want to thank you for helping at the end of 10 years. She says she's been waiting, working on this. I've been working on this all my life because I've seen kids learn at high levels. And Dr. King, he talked about the biotechnical careers in gaming and drones today. These kids, these African-American kids, have the ability to learn, not just African-American kids, the Hispanic kids and the kids who don't speak English. And I will end with this one story because it happened very recently. B. Simpson says she read it to a student of mine, and this young lady said, "Oh, I remember Mrs. Jessie because she helped me. She brought me into her office." And I said, "Who was this child?" And I, as a principal, I had gotten all these kids who didn't speak English. And so Betsy came into my office because her writing prompt was not up to par. And I said, "What's wrong?" And she broke down and started to cry. And I said, "What's going on, Betsy?" She said, "Because they want me to take my writing prompt home and have my parents help me with my writing prompt. But no one in my house speaks English, Mrs. Jessie. No one can help me." And when I look, I think one, that was Slide Seventeen, I'm not sure where you look at the gap, you have to put yourself in these kids' place, and I'm just very pleased, and I will stop talking because it means so much to me. This is a great presentation, and Dr. McDavid, and to you and your Equity Council, I'm just very excited and pleased to see the work that you're going to do, and you're just beginning down the road. You're going to do some great things for this county. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wall?
Hi. Thank you for the information. I've been wondering as well what your office has been up to. And so this was really comprehensive, and I have a much better idea now. I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind. On Slide Eleven, I'm usually pretty good at figuring out data and charts and things like that, but I wondered if you could take just a minute to talk me through a little bit more about this slide. It's the one about equity and access. It's Battlefield slide. So I'm a little, I'm unsure, and maybe I just say what part I'm struggling to understand. It says target is students to add, and it says 128, and then it says target is students in AP 252, which is more. So I'm not sure, are we trying to add 128 more students to, is that, I'm not sure why. I would think that the add number would be bigger because maybe it would include dual enrollment or something like that, but I'm not really sure about those. And then the graph at the bottom, I know the N numbers are the number of students that are in that category, correct? And then it has, it's a little fuzzy, but the percentage and like the raw numbers in parentheses, I'm not really sure. How many are in that group would be like, let's say, let's look at the blue columns. So the N equals 142, that's how many students are in that group. And then 108 is the raw number of how many we've identified that are taking an AP class, I think. And then 78, that's the percentage. And then the light gray bar that's above like the 56, that has a number five, is that how many targeted students are in that? No, okay. That's why I need some help.
No problem.
So I'm not really sure how to interpret this. If you would just help me. Thank you.
So what this is, is an opportunity chart. This is the first step in the EOS partnership, where they take the numbers for our data. So these data that are reflected here represent school year, probably school year 2021, because it was something that was done before we ever launched. So we could give a glimpse to our leaders of what we're missing out on in terms of students and who those students are. So a reason for sharing it was, one, to show that, hey, this is something where we're missing students across the board, regardless of race, ethnicity, and things of that nature. But also, here's what we could be doing if we did some targeted intervention to expand access and opportunity. So these numbers are really, they're, I won't say anecdotal, but they were to begin to start the conversation of what the gaps look like in our school division last year when we were tossing around engaging in a partnership with EOS. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
So as you come up, let me just jump on that. Just explain this line, the 11th and 12th grade targeted add, and 11th and 12th grade targeted students AP. What does that mean?
Those are students that we should be targeting, those numbers. And I can't, I can't really even say.
I don't understand. So we're going to target 128 11th and 12th graders.
I'm with you.
Add to what? And then 11, and then we're going to target 252 in AP. So explain to me what this is about.
We have 252 students currently enrolled in the AP.
You have 252 enrolled in AP at Battlefield?
In the 11th and 12th grade.
In 11th and 12th grade.
In 11th and 12th.
Got it.
So then when we look at the chart about the 128, the 128 students that are identified there, and you can look at the subgroups.
So you want to add 128 to the 250?
Correct.
That's what you want to do?
Yes. And those 128 students are students who have demonstrated success, whether it be via SOL, GPA, teacher recommendation, and so on. So those are students who are missing out on, and you can see that that crosses over every group, every student group.
Okay, thank you. That is much more, much clearer to me. And so that's great. I think we shouldn't be targeting students who, maybe they did really well in the SAT, but they're not in any advanced classes.
That's correct.
Maybe they have a 4.0, and they don't have any advanced classes. This is the kind of thing we're doing, right? We're trying, or maybe not a 4.0, but like a higher, you know, good, a B or above maybe, or even a minus.
Can you guys, just to help board members to understand, can you explain the profile that we get from the student survey that gives us the data we need to be able to say why this number is 128?
Sure. A lot of what we get back from the survey relates to students' sense of belonging, and we're able to identify students from what they self-report. You know, we have their GPAs, we have their prior academic history, but students will often report that, one, they've never been told that they can. They've never been able, never been... But students will often report that, one, they've never been told that they can. They've never been able, never been told by teachers, counselors, or others that they can access this level of coursework, advanced coursework. Whether it be because of a language barrier, it does not matter. Students will report across the board. Students will report that the teachers who I really identify with or the teachers who really do support me might not be the teachers that are teaching these courses. We get a ton of data back on these student cards. They'll talk about peer support, supports that they would need to have in place. They talk about their aspirations for their future. You know, I can give you a personal example real quick. My daughter, who just graduated from PWCS, had a fantastic experience during COVID here at PWCS High School, transferred in as a senior. On paper, she is Hispanic. In person, she presents very shy, anxiety-ridden, prior to coming. She was not a student who was identified for advanced courses. Probably because, regardless, she had a 4.0. But in spite of that, she was not someone who was assertive, who did not self-advocate, who was not out there. And so she was not identified. I, as a principal across the district in that former district, knew how to advocate for her and started that process. We're talking about doing what I did for my own daughter, for all kids in this district who have yet to be identified. And that's what this process is going to get us.
And just to put a finer point on that. So essentially what happens when you see this 128, just so everyone understands what's happening here. This isn't about just putting kids in situations and they aren't set up for success, right? This is looking at a student's profile, their GPA, their test scores, you know, teacher input on student's potential, as well as the survey that shows their personal interests and aspirations that then is used as a profile of the student, a profile card that shows that this is a student that could and should be able to thrive in an AP course. But for whatever reason, they are not enrolling in the course or not accessing the course. And so now, for example, Battlefield has a target to look at these 128 students to make sure that they are maximizing their full potential and taking advantage of these courses. And then also putting in the necessary supports that students will need to not just enroll in the course, but to successfully pass the course and even take the exam and potentially receive early college credentialing. So that's really what the profile is about. This is very intentional work. So for, you know, I want people to understand, because I've heard comments about, you know, we're not setting students up for success. That's not what this is. Equal Opportunity Schools has been doing this across the country and experienced success in school divisions across this country where students who should be taking advanced coursework are not taking advanced coursework and are underrepresented in those courses for reasons that do not have anything to do with academic ability. And so we're trying to remove the barriers for them to access these courses because, as you heard the data earlier, we know that the student who is enrolled in advanced courses have a higher graduation rate, not just from high school, we're talking about post-secondary persisting towards a four-year degree. So that's where the 128 is really intentional, targeted work that looks at the entire student's profile, including their interests, to make sure that they're properly placed and supported.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. That's very helpful information. I know when, you know, I remember getting a letter that said, hey, your student has been identified as potentially able to succeed in an AP class, but I'm assuming we're going to do more than just send a letter home, right? Because that's kind of what I think my experience has been in the past. So I'm excited to hear actually that we are targeting, we're being intentional about this and seeking to bring kids in who we think can be successful, but also supporting them once they're there. Because there are going to be some challenges. I mean, I look at this and I see, you know, common denominator is that children who are coming from a lower-income situation, that seems to be regardless of your race, is going to be a disadvantage, for whatever reason. And so that's going to be something that we need to also, I mean, it looks like that. We're going to take a look at that. Like, what do these children need to feel confident and succeed in this kind of an academic environment? Well, if we succeed, this is going to be amazing.
And we can share, at a later date following the board meeting, we can share with board members the sample student profile card that comes from the survey so that you can see what that looks like and the information that's gathered and collected to make informed decisions about placement.
And one other point to add, this work is also about building a pipeline. So we're not just surveying 10th and 11th and 12th graders. We're starting at ninth grade. It is a whole-school initiative so that we begin to identify students early. So that speaks to the systems change that we're supporting at the school level. Getting those identification behaviors in place, addressing any policy revisions and those items like teacher recommendation. How do we begin to shift our teacher mindset to see students who are at promise in different ways than the traditional GPA gatekeeper courses, but where students identify examples of how they would persevere in a course where it might not be reflected numerically? And I know, Mr. Ferrer, you wanted to add something.
Sure, yeah. Just going off your point, Mrs. Wall, that's an excellent point about the letter. Where that comes from right now is using AP potential data where there's a correlation between performance on the PSATs and we're able to identify students. This does go a little deeper than that. And the reason I know that is through the continuous improvement planning process, our CIP team did a root cause analysis for all of our areas that we wanted to focus on, on all of our strategic priorities. And that root cause analysis on this issue, one of the root causes we discovered is as great as it would be for the counselor and every teacher, every student's teacher and counselor, for 2,300 students to sit down and have an in-depth conversation about the individual student and make sure they're in the right course, that's just not practical. So using this program, this is going to allow us to have some data to instantly look at the student on an individual level and find students who should be taking advanced courses that are not. The bottom line for me is that if students are even considering going to college, they should not graduate high school without having had taken an advanced course. So this isn't about pressuring students or, you know, the 128 students. I hope that we have an outcome that exceeds that, but it's not necessarily about taking.
I don't think anyone here is thinking you're going to pressure 128.
Yeah.
We actually agree with that number.
Yeah.
No one's quibbling about that number. I don't want anyone to think that the board thinks that that number's too high.
No, I don't think, I don't think you think.
In your comments, you're making it sound like we think that's too high. It's not too high.
No, 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 no. I actually, I think it can go beyond that. What I'm saying is, I think with the interventions that we're able to address, a byproduct of that will be to hit the 128 and beyond. It's not necessarily about looking at that number. So I didn't take it that way, so don't worry. But thanks for clarifying that.
Since we're on the slide, I'm going to pound a little bit more here. You know, the 252 seems low to me. So is that how many students are taking AP classes in 11th and 12th grade at Battlefield right now or last year? It just seems like a low number to me. Aren't there more than that? Like, you have 700 graduates. It just seems like, there's so many AP classes. We really have only 252 taking AP at Battlefield in 11th and 12th grade? I mean, that's 125 in each year. Is that accurate? Are you sure of that number?
I have to look at the number. I didn't prepare that slide personally, so I'd have to look at it. It did seem low when it popped up, so.
Yeah.
EOS produced the slide, so it may be some additional context that's missing here. And I think it'd be important for us to just go back and do a check to make sure we're not misinterpreting the numbers. I do know for sure the 128 is the target. The 252, there may be some uncertainty there, so I think we should check and be sure. And this could be a follow-up that we can provide the board so that there's accuracy.
Fine, thank you. And I know Battlefield does a lot of dual enrollment as well. And I guess I would take this moment to just, it's important for our counselors and we want to remind people, dual enrollment's great if you're staying in-state for college. You'll get college credit. But if you're leaving the state, AP's probably something you may want to consider. So that's something you have to have a conversation with, with your counselor. On this slide, the last thing, I think it's really important to know that our county is diverse and our problems are diverse. So if you take a look at the low-income students in every category, that is a major challenge for us. And I want everyone to remind, you know, and it's low income, I don't care what color, what religion, whatever, you know, it's a problem. So Thomas Jefferson, with all the issues we've had over the last few years on admissions, the group who gets the lowest admission rate, so if you look at the free and reduced lunch, free and reduced lunch rate at Thomas Jefferson, it's less than 2%. It's less than 2%. So the low-income families are the ones who are getting slammed when we talk about, you know, taking advantage of opportunities, accessing, you know, potential to grow. And so I think that's important for everyone to understand that this is diversity, equity, inclusion, but it goes more than just race, you know? And I think that's very important for everyone to understand because our county is extremely diverse, but it's also diverse in socioeconomic status. And our low incomes are in every color, every religion, and we have to do better for those. And I think this is, it's good that we're pointing this out and I think it's important that we all remember that, that whatever work we can do to do that. And I appreciate, you know, in slide 10, that you guys have said that, you know, here's the bar we all need to be achieving. I would like to remind everyone that, you know, Dr. McDade and the strategic plan has committed also that everyone move up, right? It's not just about one group catching up, it's about everyone moving up. So just in the re-engagement plan coming out of the mess from the pandemic, it was recovery, re-engagement, and acceleration. And so that was for everybody, not just a certain targeted group. And I want everyone to remember that as we look forward to the work that you all continue to do. I'm going to go to Ms. Jackson.
I just have a quick question, just to piggyback on the same line of information at looking at slide 11. Is it possible to get included in the targeted groups, the students with disabilities?
Yes. And in fact, we are one of the first partners for EOS to focus this effort on our students with disabilities, first in the nation. So again, when you talk about expanding access and opportunity, we're setting some pace, being a pace setter in this work. So we will do that, and that is one of the nuanced pieces of our partnership, including students with disabilities as well in this work.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Typically, the student representative doesn't speak after student representative matters, but I felt the need to personally say thank you. I have heard from numerous students about the work you do at our schools. And I've talked to students who have talked to you. And it's kind of disappointing that this is the first time I'm seeing you, but.
I've seen you.
This is amazing. As a black student in the county, it is incredible to see how far the county is moving with you and your council's help. I have no questions. I have no comments other than thank you.
Thank you, and I hope I see you in one of those courses.
Okay, so I went and looked up, because it was bugging me about that chart. So I went and looked up the Equal Opportunity Schools, how to read the chart. And what it's saying, that total that you're seeing is combined. It's saying the 128 plus the 252 is a targeted group that have the potential, all right? And then it's setting that goal to add, so they're not saying we're going to add all of them. They're saying that you have the potential to have that total group in there, but they're targeting an add of two, I'm looking at this one that says 304. So actually, you actually are adding the two numbers together. So for example, I'm looking at a different school where it's saying here, 11th and 12th grade targeted students to add 344, 11th and 12th grade targeted students in AP, 304. And so if you look at the 128, that, I guess that's the goal of having at least 128, but it's actually 252 potential.
Right. Okay, great. That makes more sense.
So it's not representative of the total students that are already in AP. That chart is only looking at EOS, looking at the number of students that have the potential to be able to access the coursework. And then it's giving the school a targeted number that they should focus on trying to obtain.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Sargarpur?
Thank you. So I know we're looking just at AP on this slide, but we also have other kinds of coursework that we can be looking at. Some schools have IB, so that will be a different consideration for different schools, correct?
Right. So these opportunity charts were produced based on the focus of the school. So the example tonight is AP, but there are schools with IB, schools with Cambridge, where they're focusing on one or more of those advanced course offerings.
So I think it's really important to talk about, you know, we've already said that kids who take one of these classes are set up for success for college work. What we haven't, I don't think it's said very loudly here, but I think would be of interest with two things. We pay for those tests, correct? All of them? We don't, our parents don't pay for any of these things, correct? We pay IB, AP, Cambridge. Okay, so that right there, you have nothing to lose, right? We're paying for it. So right there, if you are identified, interested, whatever, sign up, right? Well, okay, so, he's muttering over here. So we have that as an advantage. You also, these are going to give you a habit of mind, a framework to work from. These are skills you need to be successful in college. So if you take one AP class, you're getting your toes wet just a little bit. You've got support from people who want to see you be successful. It might take one or two classes, but you've got nothing to lose. That's the thing. And when you get the credit, like when you get those, like a four or five, you can get college credit, right? So that could be paying for some of your college. You plan this out enough, you may have a few things taken care of before you even get to college. So this is a really huge advantage. So thank you, Equal Opportunity Schools, Prince William County, Dr. McDade. I love this.
Thank you. I just want to kind of reframe again that opportunity gaps, I'm enjoying how they're displayed here, but it's everywhere because it depends on what the achievement is that we're trying to produce. It could be in sports, it could be in specially programmed participation, what Chance mentioned earlier about robotics, and every student being able to participate. I don't want us to get so caught up in the, which I love because I didn't have, as a student, the ability to take an AP course and take the test. These things matter. I also want to bring it back in to say that this is why I value the integrative approach that we're taking. Because a lot of the narrative that's missing, it's great that we want to put students in these courses, but you also have to have the student understand why it's important. You have to have a counselor recognize the value. You have to have family members or other outside resources to support the student when they enter that class. It has to be of value to them. As a student, I just said, like, I took an AP course but couldn't take the test because I couldn't afford all of the materials that you needed to get your final and get there and just the whole shebang, right? That's decades ago. As a parent, I had my oldest, my eldest son drop from an advanced course because nobody in the class looked like him. And it was taught by an advanced, the same teacher who taught him an advanced course in a particular subject, but not the AP version of it. And in his case, it was a Cambridge level. Got to the class and saw no one who looked like him. Saw the same teacher who provided him with a syllabus that looked very similar to just a standard advanced course. So all of, it matters. Not just getting the students in the class, but how we get them there, how we support them, how we change counselors' minds on what that student looks like. Several years ago, we did a presentation to our community about what a gifted student looked like. Because the stereotype was the straight-A student, the good test taker, the organized student, and someone who automatically, once you're gifted, you go on to college. And what the information that came out was, no, 50% of those kids drop out because they don't have any common bonds with their peers. They aren't enjoying their academic rigor or coursework. Most of them are not super organized or excellent test takers and proficient at writing papers. It's about changing how we view how to get students to their goals and bringing the supports needed within and with outside of the division to meet the needs of our students, who are the ones who will end up leading us several years down the road. So I just didn't want to miss that because we look at opportunity gaps and a lot of times you see a slide like this, but it's not just getting them in the class, it's the counselors. the counselors, it's the language at home, the resources, it's all of it that contributes to making an opportunity gap. And again, I just wanna say how much I appreciate you providing this framework for all of us so that we can now begin this journey and back up the work that you've already started in the background, to get us all on the same page, to move all of us forward, to having our students succeed, no matter what it is, AP, CTE program, sports program, club, whatever it is. So I'm very thankful and appreciative.
Thank you.
I, I left the room, and I, I don't know if anyone addressed this, but the parent piece, I, I think that's so critical. I, I don't, you know, I've been in this thing a long time, I cannot tell you how many times I've heard people say they had better parents, it's the parents' fault. And like the situation I had where the students, I had lots of students who didn't have parents at home who could help them, I didn't have a parent at home who could help me either. And so I had a slide that said, don't come, don't confuse parents' attendance with caring. And I think that's critical, and educating parents when they know what to do. When I was in Title I, the teachers said, well, the parents are not doing what we, the parents are not doing what they need to do at home. I said, what does he want them to do? And so they develop something, and I don't know what your parent education, and I know my friend is back there, she's a new parent, laid on, I don't know what your new title is, but it's, it's, it's a very needed element, because once parents know what to do, they will do it.
They will.
And some parents, you know, and the other thing is that, I think, for me, and for many people in high performing schools, not, not comparing my school, because my school was in Prince William County, but their schools are all over the United States, and Dr. McDade's schools are in that, in that work, in that research. And in that research, it shows that when parents know what to do, they will do it, and that is not, Mike Maddos came here, and he's a national consultant years ago, and he said something that I think is, is very true, and that is, it's not the job of parents to teach their kids, it's our job to teach the kids. And we can't blame parents for not teaching their kids at home, because that's not their job. Their job is to support kids, and then you have parents like Dr. Latif and me and all these people up here, we can help our kids at home. But if you could do as much as you can to educate parents and let them know that their kids are bright. I, I think you've become a superstar here tonight, because everybody's just giving you so many accolades, but I think this is something that this board, not just me, but this board has been talking about it, I know Dr. Latif has been talking about it for years, so we're very excited about this presentation tonight. Thank you very much.
I'll go to Ms. Wall and Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I was, the, what Ms. Jessie said was actually also, what was on my mind is the parent piece, because, and I think you may have addressed it in one of the slides, but I think we're gonna need some education for parents as well, like, this is what these classes are, this is what kind of support your student will need, and this is why we are encouraging them to do it, and if you can, you know, when it gets hard, like, these are some tools to help your student, you know, stick with it, and, and other things like that. So I'm assuming that we have plans to help our parents help their students be successful in these classes. I'm assuming that we will, and I'm sure we will, actually, and I think you did talk about it a little bit.
Yes, there's a family academic engagement component to all that we do. Specifically with EOS, there'll be strategic and intentional communication to families, also building their capacity on where to go to find resources and supports, but not just for 11th and 12th graders, how do we support them with supporting the pipeline also? Because the pipeline starts before 11th, 12th, 10th grade, all of that. We wanna start educating our families from the beginning, as early as we can, so that they're able to support in a meaningful way as well.
Thank you, that is great. I know, in my experience, it started early, elementary school, and sometimes, you know, the gifted and talented resources that we provide in the county, you can dovetail with this, but it's not always the gifted and talented, talented students, like, can be, can students who aren't necessarily get, identified as gifted and talented, who also can achieve at high academic levels with the right supports and encouragement. And for instance, you know, how children are, what, what math rigor they are exposed to in fourth and fifth grade influences what placement they receive in sixth grade, and that key placement in sixth grade math is, is crucial for whether they're ready for calculus, you know, as a junior.
Yeah.
Right? And so that would be, you know, one of their advanced classes. So I really, you know, I really do care about this topic. The achievement gaps, the opportunity gaps, the excellence for every student, finding a way to maximize their achievement, help them believe in themselves, and, and helping their families believe in their students' ability to, to achieve and to create bright futures for themselves. So I do look forward to some great data and statistics coming forward through everybody's hard work. I understand, it's not just data, it's the hard work. Fundamentally, it's the hard work of our students, our families, and our teachers, and everybody, all of our professionals, who are counselors, you know, all of our staff and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
I just wanna take a few moments just to say thank you for the presentation tonight. It was very informative in the introduction of the role of the DEI and the framework and the next steps. As a board member, and I think like a few of the other board members talked about their experience as a parent or a student, we use our experiences to like guide our questions and make decisions. So I use my experience as a student with an IEP or a special educator and a parent to try to advocate for recognizing barriers, which is kind of like what you talked about tonight. And I appreciate the collaboration that we often have the school division in to address and remove those barriers. When I was a student with an IEP, I tried to take an AP class, and I wasn't allowed to because I had an, an IEP, despite of my teachers trying to get me into AP chemistry. And I just would, I, I know that was a while ago, because I'm old, but I just wanna use my experience to try to make sure that it, you know, I advocate for students that come behind me. I've appreciated the transparency tonight and in the previous data discussions and the back to school nights, and, and I just want to just advocate as we move forward that we continue to break down the data, which I know that we're going to, and that we are explicit in the connection between what we talked about tonight and student achievement. As an educator, I'm aware that consistent access and engagement is connected to student achievement, and I just want to encourage that continued dialogue, just so that we are, you know, very clear the relationship between what you talked about tonight and the strategic plan. And just thank you again.
Thank you.
I'm gonna just wrap up, just one comment on, Dr. Brown, thank you for talking about the pipeline. I, I know, you know, I harp on math all the time, I know that there's a lot of studies that show if you take algebra by eighth grade, you're significantly, highly more likely to take advanced coursework in high school. So not just the 10th and 11th and 9th grade, just the 7th and 8th grade and 6th grade, and as Ms. Wall points out, the, you know, access to all of that, just getting them into that and sort of discouraging or encouraging our students to take higher math in 6th grade and 7th grade and challenging them more will have dividends and payoffs in, in, certainly in high school, and I know you all know that. As, as Ms. Jessie points out, she's correct, I mean, when we had this discussion on DEI a few months ago, you know, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Ms. Jessie, but you've been around a long time, and you said every 10 years, we have new language to doc, to talk about this stuff, but ultimately, it's the same thing we're trying to solve, right? It's the same thing we're trying to solve. And so, thank you for this good work, this is a solid plan. Dr. McDade, thank you for this effort, I think this aligns nicely with our desires to improve the strategic plan, and this is a, a great, great beginning to the work we need to do to get those numbers up for everyone. Dr. McDade?
Yep, I just wanna extend my gratitude to the entire team for the presentation tonight. Also, want to thank Mr. Ferreira, it's very rare that we have a principal come and co-present with us, and so this, especially with this being a new initiative, for you to step up and lead the charge and be able to share what's happening at your school as an example, I'm really proud of that, that level of leadership here tonight in the boardroom. So thank you so much for all of your efforts to advance this work.
Okay, moving on to the VSBA Academy Awards, we're gonna go quickly through this, because I know the meeting's going along. Tonight's meeting is taking place on a Tuesday, in order for board members to attend the Virginia School Board Association's annual conference, which is attended by school boards across the state. This time each year, we award board members who have taken courses offered by the VSBA to extend their knowledge and stay current with best practices. Tonight, on behalf of the Virginia School Board Association, I'm pleased to announce awards earned by our board members and superintendent to the VSBA Academy for their commitment to effective school board governance. The Virginia School Boards Association is recognizing the following, who have received, and they have, the clerk has the certificates, award for distinctions, Ms. Adele Jackson, Vice Chair of the Prince William County School Board and School Board Member of the Brentsville District, Ms. Jennifer Wall, School Board Member of the Gainesville District, Ms. Lori Williams, School Board Member of the Woodbridge District. Next, we have one board member has received the Award of Excellence, and that is Ms. Lily Jessie of the Okaquan District. And we also now have the award for recognition going to Ms. Lisa Zargarpur, the Coles District, and I guess myself. And we have our superintendent, Dr. McDade, who is receiving the Award of Achievement. Congratulations to all, thank you very much, and round of applause, Dr. McDade, good work. Moving on, update on safety and security, we do have, it's, this item's on for information with a presentation this evening, is requested to be added to the agenda by Ms. Lori Williams, along with some of the other board members, Ms. Wall and, and Ms. Jackson and Ms. Zargarpur and pretty much everybody. Ms. Williams, let's turn it over to Dr. McDade. Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would now like to introduce Peter Nussham, our Chief of Police, Mr. Vern Bach, Chief Operating Officer, and Mr. Ron Crowe, our Director of Risk Management and Security Services. And collaboratively, they will be providing our presentation on safety and security in the school division.
Good evening, Chair Latif, members of the school board, Dr. McDade, thank you very much for having me here. I will start by saying that I do have a little bit of insight into the work that you do at the school board. I have a sister who's an elected school board member down in Florida, and I have the insight because she constantly tells me about how difficult it can be, be to do the work that you all do. I can tell you, as a resident in Prince William County, that work is very much appreciated, because I know you're working on behalf of our public school students, and so thank you for doing that. Dr. McDade, we have quickly developed a very good, strong professional relationship by necessity. My personal opinions of her, other than the fact that she's hardworking and committed to this work, is that she really cares. That has been my impression of her, and I think Prince William County is very, very lucky to have her. The, I'm gonna talk about, and I have a presentation here, about five topics, but we can open it up for Q and A at the end to talk about anything or answer any questions that you might have. And really, what I'm gonna talk about is how the work we do at the Prince William County Police Department dovetails with the work that risk management does to ensure that our schools are safe, our school communities are safe here in Prince William County. We're gonna talk quickly about the memorandum of agreement that was recently signed between the police department and the schools. I'll give you a little bit of the 22, 23 school year statistics, talk about our current deployment of our school resource officers, handling threats at our schools, how we do that on the law enforcement side, and then I wanna talk at the end about, and I think this is probably extremely important on a lot of folks' minds, is our training and responding to, God forbid, we have an active violence situation here at one of our schools. So the memorandum of understanding, I came from a, a philosophy with regards to our school resource officers, that we do not want to unnecessarily introduce children into the criminal justice system. When I had, came here to Prince William County, I did not see that memorialized in an agreement between the police department and the schools. I discussed this topic with the superintendent, and very quickly, we were be able, we were able to get this memorandum of understanding in order. More importantly, I had to, when I initially came here to Prince William County, I had to meet, obviously, with our school resource officers and get some sense as to what was going on and their philosophy and their approach towards the schools. There had been some criticism, and you know that because you were here in Prince William County, about disorderly conduct arrests, particularly at our schools, and the fact that the Prince William County Police Department was at a very high rate introducing young people into our criminal justice system, and I wanted to ensure that that philosophy changed. Kids should not be, first, in my opinion, if a child has already shown up for school, a student has shown up for school, they've already done something good, and we don't wanna take them out of that environment in handcuffs unless it's absolutely necessary. That's my philosophy on it. We were able to memorialize that thought into a memorandum of understanding, and I think that's critical, to have that philosophy in our school system here in Prince William Here's a little bit of the school data, and this is actually pretty impressive, if you look at the number of arrests that we have had in our schools, to only have five arrests, three of them involving juveniles or people under the age of 18, and two of them involving adults, for the size of the school system we have, that is a very, very low number. The things, though, that are a little bit more concerning, if you look at the number of threats that we've had at our schools, 46, that's a significant number, and the threats, I gotta tell you, and I don't have, well, actually, I don't have to tell you, very disruptive for children to have those threats, can be traumatic to kids to have to experience those threats or to see those threat, threats. And I think we have to take the threats very, very seriously, and we do, and I'll talk a little bit about that on the next slide. You look at the weapon recoveries, we've had five guns recovered from our schools so far this school year. That is five too many. We've also had other weapons recovered from the schools, and if I want, if you wanna have some comparison to last year, last year for the entire school year, we had a total of 14 arrests, four of those were adults and 10 were juveniles. We had 124 reported thefts, I mean, I'm sorry, threats at our schools, and we had 24 weapon recoveries, and nine of those weapons were guns. So I, I know that's very concerning for everyone to hear. I am a firm believer, and I know there are people who disagree with me, and I have said this since I've came to Prince William County in the school resource officer program. I believe that the school resource officer program is valuable in a lot of respects, but in particular, everyone always points to the security that the police officers can provide, particularly at our high schools, and I agree with that. More importantly, I look at our school resource officers as, as a way that the police department can build positive relationships with our young people, and that's one of the things that is missing with some of our young people today, because some of the things that have happened in policing have turned our young people off to policing. The people who do this job at the Prince William County Police Department spend their entire day bending over backwards to develop those positive relationships, and in my opinion, they're being very effective at doing it, and I will continue to say that. And the reason that I say that, because when I first came to Prince William County, there were some community leaders here, and there certainly were community leaders in other jurisdictions and some elected officials, who decided that having school resource officers in the schools was detrimental to, to our children. I have to fundamentally disagree with that, partic, and I, and I understand the reasoning behind it, and the reasoning behind it is that it, you could have a classroom-to-prison pipeline, and that's a valid concern, but I think there's some things that have happened here in the Commonwealth and here in Prince William County to prevent that from occurring. And so I would hate to see us lose that relationship building over, over that concern, when it, I don't believe it exists right now here in the county. The thing that I point to with regards to the state is, as you all know, the state has actually, doesn't... to with regards to the state is, as you all know, the state has actually doesn't, you cannot arrest young people for disorderly conduct on school property, school buses, at school events. That's been eliminated. So that concern that we had in Prince William County no longer exists. I think this memorandum of understanding I talked about earlier memorializes our approach to arresting young people in our schools. So I'll continue to say that. And we can look to just a little bit further north of here. We can look at the experience in Alexandria, Virginia. There were elected leaders that legislated that they didn't want to have school resource officers in the school. Shortly thereafter, there was a major incident at one of the schools, and next thing you know, the elected leaders had to reverse that decision. So there's a lot of value, in my opinion, in having our school resource officers if the program is run appropriately. With regards to deployment, we have a school resource officer assigned to each of our 13 high schools. We have two at Independence School, and we have three that are assigned to our middle schools. Three of our middle schools, Fred Lynn, Parkside, and Ripon Middle School, all have a school resource officer that's designated to the schools. With the remaining, remaining 18 schools, we have six school resource officers. Each of those six officers has three of those schools, and they're supposed to stop at each of those schools during the course of the day. They're supposed to develop relationships with the principals and to ensure that those places are safe. The other tool that we have in our toolbox to ensure that our schools are safe, if we receive specific information that there could potentially be something going on at one of our schools, we have everybody in our patrol division and we can give special attention to our schools. So our total number of SROs right now is 24. I believe that's a couple more than we had last year. You probably already know this as well, like many other professions, the policing profession is struggling right now, and our staffing is low. That, right now, is probably the most officers that I can dedicate to this program. As we increase our staffing, which I know we will, that will probably increase. What I would like to see, and I think the superintendent agrees with me on this, is to have a school resource officer assigned to all of our high schools and to all of our middle schools. The key to the relationship, to the, to the school resource officer program is really the relationship between the officer and the administration at the individual schools. I have not heard concerns from either side, from the superintendent or from our school resource officers, that those relationships are not working in a positive way. So I feel very good right now about our school resource officer program. Talk about the, talking about the threats at the school, we have a very comprehensive threat assessment program where we collaborate with the Prince William County Schools' risk management, the administration, and the families of the involved children. We receive threats from multiple sources. We can get them, people contacting the police. We get it from Prince William County staff and students, and the Say Something tip line, which all of you are familiar with. Virginia State Code requires that public school employees report threats to law enforcement, which is good, because we need to know about it so they can be addressed, they can be assessed. And I can tell you, of the 126 threats that we received last year and the 46 that we received this year, in the large majority of those cases, we're able to determine exactly where the threat came from. And in the majority of those cases, those threats come from students that are attending the schools. And what we do in those cases is we will speak with the student, obviously with a, with a parent present. In the majority of those cases, cases, the parents are very cooperative. Oftentimes, the parents will give us, if a weapon was mentioned during the course of the threat, parents will give us consent to search the student's room. And what we find out oftentimes is it was a young person doing something that young people do, not thinking and acting. Oftentimes, it's, it's something, and it's not something where a child should be charged. I say that, but I also caution that because these threats can be so disruptive, one of the things that I would recommend is that the legislature make the charge of conducting a threat at a school as a felony. Currently, it is a misdemeanor, and the reason I say that is because we are really restricted in our ability to investigate threats that occur outside of the Commonwealth of Virginia, because we can only enforce the misdemeanors within the Commonwealth. So we had a threat, and I remember it from last year, that originated out of New Jersey. And if we were able to get a warrant in that case, a misdemeanor warrant, we wouldn't be able to extradite that person back here to be held accountable for it. I know earlier today, and some of you may know this as well, in Maine, they had multiple, you know, calls for active shooters occurring in the state of Maine, all over the state of Maine. Very disruptive, very scary to our kids. And I think when people are involved in that behavior, to ensure that it doesn't happen again, we need to have some pretty significant repercussions. And law enforcement needs to have the ability to cross state lines in those cases to hold folks accountable. The active violence training and our response, I'll talk about this as quickly as I can to get through it. I have been very impressed with the level of training that our police officers receive here in Prince William County with regards to responding to active shooting. We have what's called tactical emergency care training, and what that is, is for our officers, in the event they come into an active violence situation where people are being injured, a mass casualty event, that they have the ability to stop people who are significantly injured. They actually practice this in our community on a pretty regular basis where they save lives. The high-threat response training is in collaboration with fire and rescue, and what that is in the event of an active shooter situation, an active violence situation, that the police and the fire department can go in there together and get people to safety, get people to emergency rooms. We, our SWAT team, we have a SWAT team that conducts regular training throughout the year. The little box on the right there, which talks about our active shooter response, that is, that is a philosophy that is good for everybody in every situation. And I don't know if you've heard of it before, you probably have. It's the run, hide, or fight. And that applies just to about any situation where it could happen, anywhere in the community. Certainly, it applies in our schools. Our community engagement team gives that presentation. If you haven't had it, I would recommend that you do. There's some examples of recent trainings that we gave. The one at the annual conference that the school has was very well-attended, from what I understand. The officers who, who gave the presentation said that the administration people who were in the class were actively involved and participating in the training. So I think that was extremely helpful. Now, this is the part of the presentation I think that scares us the most. And when I talk about this, I will refer to the one I think that's most recent in our memories, and that's the shooting that we had in Uvalde, Texas, where 19 children were killed and two teachers were killed. And I think that anybody who's taken a look at that can say that that was an abject failure on the part of a lot of people. The school administration has some blame in that they did not properly secure the facility. The person that was involved in that event was an evil person, and they went in there with a desire to harm children. And that sometime is unavoidable, but if doors were locked and they had proper security protocols at that particular school, some children may still be alive today. And then when you talk about the law enforcement response, I think that, again, abject failure. You had 77 minutes, I think it was, that children were waiting inside when this person, in some instances, was still shooting. You had some children in there that were injured, and they didn't get proper medical care. I can tell you, I am very confident that that would not happen. God forbid we had an incident like that here in Prince William County. The training that our officers receive, first of all, we are always in preparation mode. When incidents like that happen in Uvalde, Texas, we take a very close look at it to any, any lessons that are learned from that, to improve our training, to improve our potential response. We not only train our recruits in active violence scenarios, but we do ongoing training with all of our police officers. We have, we are very fortunate in Prince William County to have our own police academy, so we can adjust training very quickly for these types of things. We have what we, what is called scenario-based training, and we run all of our police officers through a number of different scenarios. And it's been my experience in my policing career that the best way to be able to approach these incidents, not only with your law enforcement personnel, but anybody, students, staff, anybody that's involved in these situations, you have to be thinking about it before it happens. And I know this is not a topic that we want to think about, but unfortunately, in society today, this can happen. And we saw it happen in Uvalde, Texas, and that's not the only police shooting, I mean, that's not the only school shooting that we have seen. Just like was mentioned earlier, just this past Sunday, we had three young people that were killed at a school down at UVA. So this happens, this is real. What I tell people all the time, as the chief of police, doing policing for 32 years, don't ever underestimate the evil of man. And that is not a jaded approach. That's an unfortunate reality of the world we live in. So you have to think about these things before they're happening, and those are the things that we tell our police officers. The approach to these situations changed dramatically after the Columbine incident. That was in 1999. I was a police captain at the time, and what happened at Columbine, and this is the way that police were trained to approach active violence situations, was you wait, you contain, and you wait till your special teams arrive on the scene. That was the approach. That changed in 1999, and it actually has evolved since then. The approach then, since then, is that you get, when something like this has happened, it's an active situation, quickly get officers to the scene. You establish incident command. That was the major, one of the major criticisms that we had in Uvalde is they did not establish incident command. Some of you may be saying, well, what's the chief talk about, talking about, what is incident command? What that means is the first police officer that arrives on the scene is in command. And they are in command until somebody of a higher rank comes and relieves them. They are in command. That's the first rule. The second rule is that if there's an active violence situation and one of our police officers arrived, they don't wait for help. We are trained, we have equipment, we have vests. You go in there and you stop the threat. And that's the way that our officers are trained here in Prince William County. Some of these other things are going to happen. A lot of these things are going to be happening during the same time. You safely evacuate or shelter in place, and people will ask, well, which one do we do? It depends on the circumstances. I can't tell you right now in every single situation what you do, but you go back to that mentality of run, hide, or fight. You run if you can safely, you hide if you can safely, and your last resort, if neither of those options are available, is that you fight. And you fight in the hardest and the, in the most extreme way that you can. Medical care, we have to coordinate medical care with fire and rescue. We have to, have to establish reunification because something happens at any large event, particularly at our schools, guess what's going to happen? All of the parents associated with that school are coming. We have to set up a reunification point and notifying the public. That's, that's one of the things that we have to do. We have to let people know something's going on. These things will all be happening at the same time. Our police department is very well-equipped. We have breaching tools. You heard a lot of, when you talk about the Uvalde situation, you heard a lot about police officers trying to get through doors and having difficulty and not having keys and those kinds of things. That is not a concern here in Prince William County. We have breaching tools. If we need to get through a door or a window, we're going through that door or their window. We're going to get in there, and we're going to stop the threat. We have great partnerships with our, and, you know, we have the FBI located right here in Prince William County. We have great relationships with our federal partners. It brings additional resources if we need them. Great relationship with our Virginia State Police if we need them. Our response times are going to be very quick in, in the event, God forbid, like I said, if something like this happens. And the other thing, and this is one of, another one of the grim realities, is that the reason that I'm confident with the way that the police department will respond if something like this were to happen, is that we have shooting incidents like this that have happened. You guys all remember that we had a shooting on a Sunday at Benton Elementary School. I'm sorry, that was a Benton Middle School during a flag football game. A lot of people were out there. Prince William County Police responded to that incident. They were quickly able to get medical care to the two people that were shot. Both of those people survived. They were able to get the, to coordinate reunification with the families and the children. And then, the good news is, is that the person that was responsible for that was eventually arrested and held accountable. The other incident is last year, in August of '21, we had a shooting during a football game at Freedom High School. For those of you who are familiar with that situation, it was during a driving rainstorm, and there was, we had that same situation. Whenever you have gunshots at an event like that, there's panic. People panic, people, and that's natural, it's normal. Police were able to respond. They were able to get medical attention to the person that was involved. They were able to establish a reunification center, and they were able to get that scene resolved pretty quickly. The person that was responsible for that shooting was also arrested and held accountable. That's why I'm confident, I can't tell you I don't lose sleep thinking about these things, because I do, but that's why I'm confident that you have a police department here in Prince William County that has the ability to effectively respond if something like this happens. That is the end of my presentation. I don't know if we want to ask Ron to come up and give his, and then we can collectively, or if you'd like to make comments or ask questions now.
Chief, thank you so much for that presentation. Let's have Ron do his presentation, then the, then the questions may be better with context from both.
Thank you, Chief. Nussham, and I want to thank Chief personally for his continued support of our schools and for the strong relationship that we enjoy with the Prince William County Police Department and our relationship with our school resource officers in the district. Before I start tonight, too, I want to extend just my heartfelt condolences to the UVA and Charlottesville community. That's a community I lived in for 17 years, and my thoughts and prayers go out to that community. But that also highlights the importance for us of safety and security within our schools. So through our close relationship and partnership with Prince William County, Department of Fire and Rescue, and the Office of Emergency Management, we collectively take steps every day to make our schools safer and reduce the probability of an incident that could harm students, staff, or visitors. Prince William County Schools implements required safety training in schools every year, and it is only through practicing lockdowns, defend options like run, hide, fight, fire drills, weather drills, shelter-in-place procedures, and other scenarios that students and staff can be prepared for an emergency. Additionally, the school system has established a safety committee that meets regularly to discuss safety in our schools, and I personally want to thank, extend, and extend my gratitude to members of that committee. Through that ongoing dialogue and focus on school safety, we're continually evaluating our safety procedures across every level throughout each school year. Tonight, you'll receive a high-level update on security and safety initiatives and programs in our schools that are occurring across the division. I want to emphasize that this is high-level, a high-level update, and there are many safety protocols and procedures that we will not share tonight as we keep them close to the vest and they're not for public consumption. We keep these items close to the vest to keep our students, faculty, and staff safe. Finally, it's important to recognize that everyone plays a critical role in school safety. Students, staff, and the community are encouraged to be observant and let an adult know if they see or hear something that makes them feel uncomfortable, nervous, or frightened, and especially if they hear threats or dangerous behavior. If you have any doubt, contact law enforcement immediately. At this time, I want to turn the rest of the presentation over to Mr. Ron Crowe, our Director of Risk Management and Safety and Security. Ron?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Latif, Dr. McDade, and school board members. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to share this information with you. I do want to thank Chief Nussham for being here this evening. We have a decades-long partnership with the Prince William County Police Department and specifically the SRO unit. That unit works with our schools and my department literally around the clock on school safety issues, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate their, their partnership in that. So we want to talk about things that we're doing in safety and security, and I think we want to couch we want to couch that with what's in our strategic plan. So our safety and security initiatives live under commitment number two of positive climate and culture. We want to have Prince William County facilities be welcoming, safe, and sustainable, with 90% of our students and staff reporting feeling safe at school. Right now, our middle and high school students, that number hovers around 80%, and we have area for improvement there. I'm confident that we have a plan in place to be able to move those numbers significantly and impact student achievement. So what are our initiatives and investments? Our initiatives, which I'll talk about individually, are implementing the Say Something and Honest Reporting System, annual school safety assessments, updating some of our systems to more current technologies, providing for a consistent, visible, and well-trained security staff, and increasing crisis management readiness division-wide. Some of our investments we've made just this year are the addition of three senior school security officers, a security system specialist, an operational system specialist, an additional elementary school safety officer, an additional day shift security patrol officer, and 97 security assistants. We provided support to every level of schools. And for those of y'all counting at home, that is 104 FTEs dedicated to school safety and security just this year. Our Say Something initiative was launched in December of 2021 and has been fully implemented. We've trained more than 40,000 secondary school students, more than 1,300 staff have been trained. In October, there's an annual refresher, video and training provided to these students so we can keep the Say Something initiative on the forefront. And just to give you an update of where we're at, since December 6th till the end of October, we've managed to respond to 447 tips. At the top of that list are concerns with students' mental health. I can tell you that it's nice to be able to say that we've had students in need and we've been able to provide assistance to them. Other things that come in behind that are threats to schools regarding typically social media issues. And all of those receive 24/7, 365-day support. We're conducting annual school safety assessments. The state requires that you do them every three years. We're doing them every year to try to identify areas of improvement across our school division. And we review those findings with the Safe School Advisory Council so they can provide input for us on that and provide some guidance and focus our efforts. Improving our technologies in the school division, we are updating all of our schools to more current CCTV platforms called Verkata. That's a $6.8 million investment. That's a significant investment in upgrading all of our school security systems for cameras. We have hired a security system specialist to manage that process. Recently, you approved in the last school board meeting an addition of two vendors to make three vendors that can provide installations at our schools. So we're going to kick this thing into overdrive. But prior to that, we've currently completed installations at 23 schools. We have 10 schools that have partial implementation, five underway, and 12 purchase orders out for approval with cameras ordered. So we're moving forward pretty quickly. We also have requested funding through the Annual Safe Schools State Security Grant for additional funding at a high school. We want to provide for a consistent, visible, and well-trained security staff for this year. And starting this year, we provided security uniforms to all of our school security officers. We want them to be visible and recognized by our staff, students, and community when they show up, and also our law enforcement partners if they have to respond. That includes shirts. We've got winter jackets for them that are all branded with PWCS security, as well as hats and stocking hats. We want them to be highly visible. And in addition to that, we want our staff to be visible. So whenever they're outside, they're wearing high-visibility vests and they're carrying radios. I was at two elementary schools recently, one during dismissal, and when I pulled up, I saw a half a dozen staff outside wearing vests. You knew exactly where they were and that people were outside and paying attention. So I think that's vitally important. Let's talk about professional development in a minute for our school security officers. The state requires that we do eight hours of training annually to complete and update their school security officer training. Our school division is fortunate enough to provide 36 hours of training annually to our school security officer staff. To provide for more coherent safety and security processes at all of our schools, we have security information in our regulations, we have in our crisis management plan, our security guidelines. It became apparent that we needed to condense that information so it was more easily used by the end users. So we came back to, with a document, a one-page document called Back to Basics that we launched back in the spring and reemphasized at the beginning of school. And on that document is 20 things that every school should have in place every time we walk up to a school. So we go up, we look, and we see, hey, here's your 20 things. That's our security posture. That's where we want to live every single day at every single school. We expanded that with our Prince William County Schools Guide to Best Practices in School Safety and Security, and added to that one-page document additional information that's easy to find and easy to understand with the links to other information for schools. So if you look between those two documents, it's readily apparent and clear what our security posture and training is for our entire school division. We want to increase our division-wide crisis management readiness. As we spoke a little bit earlier, there are 15 required crisis drills each year. Last year, we purchased the Raptor Crisis Drill Manager Module. We're able to track all school crisis drills every year, so at any given time, we can look and help focus schools and help remind them of drills that need to be completed on a regular basis. They can go and plan drills ahead of time. So that's a good tool for us to use to make sure we're completing all of our drills as required by the Code of Virginia. My staff reviews all crisis plans during the summer. That's also state code requirement, so every page they turn in that's required to turn in, we review every single one of those to make sure they're up to date and current. We are completing, starting last year, after-action assessments for significant security events in schools. The goal of that is to look at things and help schools understand and celebrate the things that went well and things they did well, as well as areas that we could look for improvement moving forward. And that includes central office staff, my staff, our law enforcement partners, and any of the school staff that were involved in that process and decision-making process. We share that with other schools to make sure everyone's learning, and we're in a process of continuous improvement. We provide to the cabinet on a monthly basis data-driven reports on school security and safety and what our posture is. It became apparent that we need to start treating school safety like we do instruction. We have measured goals, and we have to have defined data to determine where we're at and measure that so we can, again, celebrate our, the things that are going well and look to improve things that need improvement. Also, in our strategic plan, by 2025, we'll have annual crisis training and evaluation of all schools. So we're looking at how we're going to support that and move forward and grow our training staff so we can be out at schools on a more regular basis. I do want to talk about our senior school security officers for a minute because they fulfill a role that has been badly needed in the school division. So we added three positions. They all support our high and middle schools. They provide evaluative data on our school security posture every time they walk on site. So they're working with schools on that back-to-basics when they're on-site and providing feedback and training to schools, security staff, and administration on where we're at. They assist with crisis response on school site. And they also will be working with schools when we receive after-hours threats to make sure that we have a proper response, communication is in place, and the morning after that we have support at the schools for those events. And one of the other things we heard loud and clear from our high and middle school administrators is, you know, we don't have our lead school security person here, we need support for that. We need to fill that leadership void at the school because it's vitally important. So these three positions, when we have a lead school security officer out at the school, we'll fill that position until a new officer comes in, then they'll train that person on best practices and our guide and back-to-basics to make sure we're coherent across our school division at those schools. And they'll also mentor our new school security officer. So, you know, I think that goes a long way to make sure that we're all doing the same thing and we have a well-trained staff at our schools. And, you know, and just to make mention of our elementary school community safety officers, a couple of them are here with us tonight, they'll be providing those same services at our elementary schools. So what are some of our school security initiatives? We have senior school security officers, community safety officers, security patrol officers, and security residents supporting our school's security posture. They're out every day walking rounds around schools, around the outside, because most importantly, we want to make sure our schools are secure from the outside in. Through October, they've done more than 900 exterior rounds of schools during the school day, and our security residents and security patrol staff have done thousands of rounds of our exterior, of our, of the school exteriors during after-hours and overnight shifts. So we're out there constantly supporting our school's security posture. We've standardized our security protocols for varsity full school football games, as well as other after-school events. I think if you've been to a football game, you'll see a very visible presence where we're stationed at areas in the school. We always have a police officer in the parking lot with lights on riding around during the game. So it's very evident that we have a security posture in place at our schools. We have pre-shift meetings. We have radio communications for all of our school and administrative staff with the police department and communication with the other schools that are traveling to games to make sure we're all on the same page. We've trained all of our security staff on the use of Narcan. We will continue that with our new security FTEs added this year and do annual trainings to make sure all of our security staff are trained in that and have that Narcan available that they carry themselves. And then, excuse me, as far as signage, we posted Weapons and Gun Free School Zone signs that also have the legal and code of consequences. We are also reviewing, you know, what the total signage package is for schools so we can have that be consistent across the school division. Last year, we provided the schools high-visibility lanyards. You've seen those, they're conference-based lanyards, they're always forward-facing, they have the visitor badge in them, it's clear who your visitors are at schools. We have provided for QR code security round systems. So essentially, every time our security staff, whether they be school staff, security residents, or our security patrol staff does rounds of schools, we're capturing that data. So what's getting, what gets measured gets done. So on a regular basis, we can show you exactly what our security officer efforts are at schools. We implemented that over the summer with our patrol and residents and with our school security officers in October. Again, I talked about our crisis drill reporting module. That's another way that we've upgraded our technology. And we were recently awarded a state digital school mapping grant to have a company come in and go to every single one of our schools and provide extremely detailed maps that will be used by law enforcement on emergency responses needed. So there's a lot of information on those maps. We can also use them in our school division for certain things, but we're looking forward to getting that done. For FY '24 to '26, we're going to be replacing all of our 800 megahertz radios. So those radios are used by all of our school buses, security patrol staff, and my office. All schools have an 800 megahertz radio, they can make direct contact with the Public Safety 911 call center, and every so often, we have to upgrade that technology. Every year, you hear Mr. Wallingford talk about putting hundreds of thousand dollars into a sinking fund for this. So we have money in our budget to, we've been, that we've been working on for about 10 years, to fund this project. So we'll be working on that over the next couple of years. But ultimately, I just want to talk about a few things on what we're doing to keep schools safe. Clearly, we need to keep all of our interior and exterior doors locked. Exterior doors all time and interior doors and wherever we're involved in student instruction. We don't have time when there's an event to get into a secure posture. We need to already be in a secure posture. We've had this requirement for numbers of years. We're out with our staff, making sure that we're being coherent and training our staff and school security staff to look for these and make sure we are in a secure posture at all times. All schools have controlled access. So we have the access control system where we can evaluate people before they come into the building, and that's called the Aphone system. We do training on how to talk and question to people while they're outside before they come into the building. All school have, schools have crisis plans that we talked about, and all schools have to watch our crisis management terminology and response video annually. That's a state code requirement that we review crisis procedures with all staff and students every year at the beginning of school. So we also do that. As far as continuous improvement, we're always seeking that. We're currently reviewing our central office crisis response protocols to increase our support to schools during crisis. We're looking at our incident command structure and communication protocols. Our crisis intervention teams are always there to help with mental health support to schools after crisis. We're looking at implementing a division-wide reunification support team. So if we do have to move a number of students from one school to another, we have a trained staff team that we can go out and assist schools with that. We want to provide more supports to schools during crisis. We are reviewing our crisis management plan to make it more easily consumed by our end users. So while a lot of the content will remain the same, how we present it, we think will be easier for staff and students to understand and consume. So we're looking at that. And of course, as usual, we always attend national-level training so we can always, you know, be aware of what the newest things are out there and keep our staffing or response actions up to date. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crowe. Thank you, Ms. Bach, Chief Nussham. We really appreciate it. Questions? We'll start with Ms. Williams and then Mr. Welk.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and presenting information this evening. For me, I asked for this to be on the agenda because I started thinking about school safety and security, specifically from a parent perspective, last year after the incident in my end of town, and how information was disseminated, and then the changes that ensue for the good for our school division. And then, as a board member, specifically, I thought, I started thinking, how do we present this information to our school families? Because we do spend a considerable amount of time throughout our school year, every year, updating our students, our staff, and our families of those students and staff on what it is that we do to ensure a safe school environment. But I think, or I know, for me, it was, how do we consolidate that information? Because the public outcry was, what about this? What about this? What about this? Every time we have an incident. And it got me to really thinking, we do this all the time, but we don't do it in a manner that's concise, and we don't do it often enough in a manner that's concise for the good of our whole community, right? When we start our school year, we go over the Code of Behavior. Love that we've updated it. It's so much easier to understand and comprehend throughout the school, thank you, Ms. Hubner, throughout the school year, we address these topics, but we don't just have one opportunity to share multiple sides of this story for our school community to understand and digest. So I want to say thank you first off because I understand and know the amount of work that it takes to consolidate this information, the amount of schedule coordination it takes to get Chief Nussham here, everything involved in this presentation. So I really do, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate all of you coming tonight and for the, all the hard work that went into having both of these presentations made available for our public. I think that's something our public also doesn't understand is, you can have an idea in July, it may not manifest here in this room sometime for several months because of the amount of moving pieces. I'm going to start with Chief Nussham, start, since you started with the open us up this evening. I very much appreciate you attending. I have the opportunity, unlike some of my other board members, to work with you monthly on the Racial and Social Justice Commission. I bring that up because I admire all of your hard work and effort. I think that the Racial and Social Justice Commission was a very important tool used to bring more public attention to the memory of understanding and what that exactly means to our community. I appreciate that we were able to look at it from an administrative and operational side at the school division, but also to be able to provide the public the same sort of... of opportunity to delve into that and what it means to our schools and how our schools work collaboratively with the police department. I want to thank you as a long-serving school board member because I think I was maybe, Mr. Crowe, you could probably attest to this, one of the primary school board members that hounded every year that we looked at it and our former administration and, of course, you, Mr. Crowe, about what's in there and how are we going to change it and how does this, what does this mean? How does it, how do we take it from a document and implement it? And I think that, starting with that foundation, building on it with our new administration and our new chief of police in his administration, I think we have something that I feel comfortable and from my lens is a quality document that really ensures collaboration and the ability to work for the good of our entire school division and the community at large from both sides. I noticed that in your presentation, you changed it to a memorandum of agreement, which I thought was great because it's more than just an understanding. And I think it's important, if you have not had a chance for our public to read that agreement, I highly encourage you to do so. I, you talked a lot about Chief Newsome about the ratio to off ratio of SROs in our schools. And I just want to thank you for also bringing up the fact that along with school divisions, the police are also having employment staffing issues and that does affect us. One of the things that's not included in your presentation, but I don't want to leave out, is that the police department is also responsible for crossing guards.
We are.
If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
They're also an important tool and are ensuring the safety and security of our students. And I think I bring that up because a lot of our public doesn't understand that crossing guards fall under your auspices and not ours.
If you don't mind me commenting real quickly on that.
Sure.
We have a very committed, really remarkably committed group of folks who go out and ensure that our children get to and from school on a daily basis and a great group of folks and they are part of our security plan. So thank you for raising that.
Absolutely. I bring it up because I know that my school board member who sat here before me ended up retiring and becoming a school crossing guard officer. So that was fun fact about the Woodbury's district. I know that you spoke about response time in the past. We had Chief Bernard here who spoke about how depending on what school you're at, correct, it's usually very quick. I don't want to get down to the nitty-gritty minutes because, of course, our community has changed since then and I appreciate that. One of the things I'd like for you to address, but at a high level, is how we work together during an emergency. I bring this up because earlier this year, there was an incident at my high school and there was, I think, a lot of misunderstanding from the public and some of our own staff and and students on how it is that you work collaboratively with our school security teams, meaning there is a protocol that the police department has to follow and then there's also a set of protocols that our school division follows as well. And I don't need the specifics, right? Because we don't want to jeopardize anybody's safety. But I know that there, for example, there was a, I got a call from a parent who was on site and said, well, I heard the police gave the all-clear. How come everyone's still in the building? And if you could speak to that, maybe, Mr. Crowe, I don't know who else from our side would jump in, but I think it's important for the public to understand that we work together, but there are still separate procedures for each entity to ensure safety and who's responsible sort of along those lines during an emergency.
Yeah, it's a really good question and I will tell you, if you do after-action reports on any critical incident, one of the reoccurring concerns is communication. And everybody, you know, communications comes from a bunch of different sources. So we spend a lot of time collaboratively talking about better communications. When we have an incident that occurs at the school and we feel like communication was flawed, we try to improve that. The best way for communication to occur is, and I go back to what I spoke about earlier, is the relationship with the SRO and the administrator who's in charge of the school, which is usually the principal. In the event of a situation at the school, they should be communicating and then we allow the schools to make the communication either to the parents or the students on what is needed to be said. Ultimately, that decision lies with the principal. Unless it's an immediate emergency and we tell them you can't do things, ultimately, it's going to be the principal that's going to make those decisions and those communications.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I think there's a.
And if I'll chime in, Ms. Williams.
Sure.
One of the things that you've heard both gentlemen talk about was an incident command structure. And so typically, that's established jointly with police on scene and firing any EMS come on scene. It's a joint collaboration which would include our staff in there. And I will tell you that Mr. Crowe and I both attended the debrief for the after-action of the incident that you're referring to and Chief Newsome is totally accurate. It always comes down to communication and then working through that to recognize where those breakdowns occurred, take away that learning. And not only do we share that with amongst the team members there, but our plan moving forward, and we've implemented this, is to share that learning across the district, kind of like a case study approach so that our principals across the district can learn from what went well and where we needed to improve. That way, if they encounter a similar situation, they'll know how to better respond at their site.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm only picking on this incident because it's my district and I think it's a very recent thing for for most people to be able to identify with. The last thing I'm going to ask, I think, is for Chief Newsome, is what, from your perspective as a law enforcement officer, advice, because you look through it through a different lens than we do as a school division, for our our school families when it comes to responding to incidences or how to best communicate with law enforcement? What advice would you impart for us?
So what I would say, that our worst enemy in security generally is complacency. We talked and Ron talked about it, I talked about it as well because of the situation in Uvalde, but the locking of the doors to ensuring that the doors, people don't get access to the doors. If you have a bad actor and that bad actor actually attends the school, they're going to be watching those things. Complacency occurs when the adults who have responsibility sees those things and they don't do anything about it because they they look at it and they say, well, the kids were just getting Chick-fil-A for lunch. You know what I mean? And they downplay the significance of not having the building be secure. So that complacency is the type of thing that we're struggling all the time with our adults to say, you can't be complacent about that. I'm not saying that a kid has to be punished or, you know, be suspended or anything like that, but there needs to be a conversation with the students that this can be very, very serious. If you leave those doors open, it gives somebody who's watching an opportunity to enter our schools and once they get in the schools and if they have bad intent, bad things are going to happen.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I understand that I, as a former facility security officer, I think I spent, it felt like anyway, half of my job going, don't let the next person in, let the door lock, let him hit the buzzer. I know you know them, but it doesn't matter because someone could be coming right after them. So I do appreciate that and it is a different lens than we look through as from a school division perspective or an average parent or a board member.
I would just add to that, I wish we didn't live in a world where we needed to do that, but we do.
Right.
And that's what I think that we do on a regular basis, just reminding folks during the summertime, we spend a lot of time with risk, a lot of time with staff, trying to reemphasize that these things are real, they can happen and we got to ensure that it doesn't happen here in Prince William County.
That's wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to switch gears a little bit and turn to our school staff. For Mr. Crowe, Mr. Bach, thank you for your presentation this evening. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit, just going to piggyback on that question since we're already there, from your lens, on the school division side, what recommendations would you have for our school families, students and staff for school safety or things that you think that are good to just generally remind our public about?
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of things. You know, we have some of the staff we talked about today, we have 10 to 14 staff on the road every single day visiting schools, making sure that we're in a security posture we want to be in. And again, complacency is that. We need to have people have some patience sometimes. So when you're at the door trying to come in, understand we're going through a process to let people into the school. It may take a few minutes on occasion. And I think the other thing too is to understand when we're going through crisis communications, we can't compete with social media. So people are immediately on their phones and texting things and putting things out and wondering why we're a little bit behind that curve because we have an obligation to work with the schools, to work with the police department, to make sure the information we're putting out is correct and accurate and to make sure information we're putting out isn't going to undermine any information or efforts that the police have to manage that process. So just from a couple of those standpoints, I think those are important things to remember. And Ms. Williams, I'll add, you know, one of the things that I mentioned in my opening comments, really, parents having conversations at home and encouraging their kids, if you see something, say something. That's really important. We get a lot of tips from students that enable us to follow up and, you know, ensure safety within the building. And the other thing I'll always go back to is safety is never convenient, you know, and you just heard Ron talk about that a little bit. Sometimes it's not convenient, but we do those things with purpose and we do those things to keep our students safe. One of the things, I think it was the incident that occurred in St. Louis, we took that opportunity. There was a, they handled it really well. There wasn't a significant loss of life because there were locked doors in the school. Interior doors were locked. So we took that opportunity to remind our school community and our principals and teachers that it is important to keep our interior doors locked and remain in that security posture.
Thank you. Could you speak a little bit, because something I learned at Parent Title I Camp and I'm not sure that the word is really spread out there, mostly because it would be dependent on your student to come home and tell you and depending on their age and how much they want to share, you get what you get sometimes. But I wonder if you could speak to a little bit about how we've modified our approach to be age-appropriate and easily comprehensible by our students and relevant. Because as the chief was saying, you know, before, we didn't have like, what is it, a run, hide, fight, right? Most of us, I think, at least speaking from my generation, is sort of hide, right? Wait for backup and then you just don't do anything. So we continue to modify and evolve those procedures, but I was very impressed with what I saw at the Parent One, Title One Family Camp, excuse me. And I wonder if you could speak a little bit about how we're doing that division-wide and how it's being modified.
I don't know that we're modifying. I do know that, you know, when they review, I spoke about our crisis management video. There's one that we showed to middle and high school students and staff and there's another video that doesn't include some information that elementary school students watch. So we provide information on crisis management and response. But I really think the teachers and the staff at the school are the ones who know how to take that information and provide, communicate that in an age-appropriate manner to their students. They're with them every day. They know what students in their classroom can manage and handle, so we're going to provide them information. We're going to rely on them to provide that in an age-appropriate manner. And Ms. Williams, I think what you might be referring to is when Mr. Edwards goes out to our schools and provides training for our students, he does adapt it so that that training is age-appropriate. I've been an elementary, middle and high school principal and there is a significant difference in how you do go about presenting that information. I will tell you that we receive overwhelmingly positive feedback from our students. Our students appreciate Mr. Edwards going out and they express they're very open with him when he goes out to train and safety is first and foremost on their mind. They have concerns and they're always very appreciative and the comments that we get about his training are always very positive from the students. They're appreciative and they want to have it. But yes, we do adapt that according to the level of students we're training.
Okay, I'm going to wrap this up because I know that people have to talk, have questions. I just want to say I appreciate that because I think that marries very nicely with dealing with our students' mental health while they're learning these subjects, these trainings and learning why security and safety is important and how to respond and not just being put through, go to the hallway, sit down. It can be traumatizing, especially for our younger ones. And so I appreciate, that's sort of what I was referencing with the modernization. The last thing that I'm going to say is I again want to thank you for being here in person. I think there's a tremendous amount of value to being able to see the people who are responsible at a high level for our safety and security. This is what you do for your job, day-to-day for our students, how it is impactful in other areas of our student and our staff's lives on a day-to-day basis. And to you, Chief Newsome, I think that, again, there's so much value in seeing our local chief of police here in our boardroom, communicating with our school families and our school community. I think that shows such a high level of respect for our school community and how well we work together to ensure the safety of our school families. So thank you very much. I appreciate all of your time.
Okay, Mr. Wilk.
Thank you all for being here, Chief Newsome, everyone. I appreciate your time. The good thing of following Ms. Williams is a lot of stuff gets answered. So I will go through and just a couple noticeable things and reiterate some points that she made. You know, that SRO deployment slide, slide five, I think that's very important. Mr. Crowe would know, being on the Safe Schools with me for five years, I think ad nauseam, I kept on saying like, why can't we have more SROs? Why isn't this made, you know, why, why isn't anyone explaining this? Because, you know, Citizen A, Citizen B, whatever, want to know why we can't put more SROs in our school. And, you know, the perception might be that the school board doesn't want more SROs in the school. And I appreciate you detailing exactly kind of where we're at in that situation right now. And I see you guys everywhere at hiring fairs, community events, so it's not a matter of not trying to hire new officers because I don't think there's ever been an event I've never, you know, seen your group at trying to recruit new officers. But just wanted to add that and I appreciate, you know, you being forward with that because if we follow then Mr. Crowe's presentation and put everything in context, the fact that this board hired 104 FTEs to, 104, how many? I said 104.
140.
Okay, we'll say 140. 140 or 104, whatever. There's a difference. But anyways, so that number of FTEs just last year and those investments, I think, are crucial, especially adding those security specialists to the elementary schools as we phase those in and look at other precautionary measures. Just other comments, the visible uniforms. I know, I think I heard from some security site-based people at first that they weren't extremely happy with those, but as I've seen it and the application of it, I think it's great. It gives that presence to the students, to staff, and I think from a parent or an outsider standpoint, it gives that level of assurance like, oh, these are people who are actually like in the school or specialists or people helping protect the kids. So I like that. You kind of answered slide nine of what percentage, you know, those three experts are onsite versus at central offices, it seems like they're at schools a lot.
It's the idea.
Yeah, the idea, okay. Other noticeable things to add, you know, I've gone to probably football, football games, 75% of my Fridays this fall, and I've noticed some major differences even over the last, you know, year, the safety, security, the presence of police, you know, just even how the students interact with them or the behaviors which have completely changed and been tempered and stuff like that. And I think, again, that's a testament to the protocols and the implementation of making sure that there's protection at these events such as, you know, a football game or now we'll be hitting varsity basketball season and, you know, those Friday night or Thursday night games. So just, you know, a major recognition to that, wanted to recognize that. Wanted to add with the say-something thing from, just from a backend side, so if a submission comes in, and I imagine the answer to this is, you know, yes, but if a student says or someone puts in that, you know, they're going to harm themselves or they're going to harm a school like a threat, that I'm assuming there's an IP, like what is the process that goes into something like that when that type of incident occurs?
So if they come in after hours, the first thing that occurs is there's a call to the police department, to the 911 dispatch center, we're getting people moving. The next call are to, they make positive contact with the central office team and the school-based team to provide an immediate response. So it's a, it's literally a 24/7/365 process, no matter when it comes in. If there's kids that need help at the middle of the night, we're up, you know, 1:00, 2:00 a.m., providing addresses to wherever they need to go to chase that information. So until, until we go to completion, whether it's a student in need or a threat that comes in.
Excellent. And then the last thing, I think it was briefly touched on, but, you know, when we're talking about the tragedies of Uvalde or Sandy Hook and all those events where our teachers were on the front lines and horribly sometimes the shields to protecting those children, what role has teacher feedback or collaboration gone into all these protocols and the site-based, you know, this different procedures and stuff like that when you guys are factoring in, you know, these security drills or what occurs in these scenarios, you know, to make the teachers feel more comfortable with what we're trying to implement?
Yeah, I mean, that's a difficult situation when you're training people to respond to the incident.
the incidents that we're talking about. I think the comfort comes into making sure they're trained and well-prepared. I mean, these are nationally recognized best practices that we're going through, and making sure we're aware and not be complacent, as the chief has said. Those are the major components that we, you know, try to keep in control and manage. So, we do listen to the principals, we've got numbers, these, you know, of additional security assistance for response to them. Our hiring processes have been changed due to input from principals at every level for some of our security staff, and so we do seek input, and we try to update and change our processes to be responsive to those.
Excellent. Thank you all for being here, and Ms. Williams, thank you for adding this to the agenda. Appreciate all of you for being here.
Ms. Wall.
I know it's really late, so I will be brief. But, I just wanted to say, next to student achievement, this topic of school safety and student safety is just like right up there for me personally. And I wanted to thank you for this great information, detailed presentation, both from the chief and from our schools. And I, you know, you're right, what gets measured gets done. I really like that quote. And I know, as I've advocated for additional security measures at individual schools in my district that I'm aware of had issues or needed additional security coverage, those requests were well-received. And then all of these, all of these security initiatives are just amazing. They're so, we've done so much, and I'm really impressed. And I also really value the partnership that we have with the police department. The SRO program is fantastic. I hear really good things from the community about how valuable the community sees that relationship and how well it's working. I only have one high school, so I can speak for the high school that I keep tabs on, so they're just really pleased. So, I just wanted to thank all of you who have worked on this, your staff, police officers, everybody, for prioritizing student safety. And I know, you know, this is one of the most important things that we do, is providing an environment where people, especially children, but our employees as well, feel safe coming and learning. And if they feel safe, they'll be able to, they'll be able to learn and grow. So, I know it's vitally important. I just wanted to thank you.
Ms. Jesse.
I too will be brief. Mr. Crowe, I want to thank you guys because, you know, I've been here for a long time, and I want to thank you for keeping us safe. The table talks, the intruder in the building, all those things, I want to thank you. And to the chief of police, I want to thank you for bringing up what happened in Texas. Because, as a former principal, I sat there that day thinking, what's happening with these babies, and why is no one doing anything? And thank you, I think this helps the parents to know that there is what you call an incident command, and all the back-and-forth people's talking, and I can relate. My first thought was, this principal should be in trouble. In fact, my principal friends called me and said, "Why was that door open?" I don't know if the door was open, or the infamous rock in the door, which you always have at schools. But, I just want to thank you guys for coming tonight and sharing everything with us. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jack.
I'll be brief too because it's getting late. Just thank you, Chief Newsome, for coming tonight. I agree that SROs are valuable, and both from building relationships to security. I have a really quick question because, say, someone's driving by a school and they see a door open, what would be the best steps, like, because their tip line, would, that wouldn't be the, like, what would, what would you advise the best steps would be?
Yeah, I mean, we can respond to things we know about. If someone sees a door open, I'd, you know, have them call school administration, report that. We're going to be responsive to that. We're going to figure out why that's the case and move forward with fixing the problem. Obviously, that should not be the case at any school that we have, and we're looking to, you know, be hyper-focused on that to make sure that that's not the case. So, if you do see those things, report it to the school or administration or my office. We'll reach out and manage that situation.
So, call the school. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that you're, I know I'm taking a long time. I don't have anything that you need to answer right now. I just want to throw these out there in the atmosphere, and hopefully we'll pick it back up at a later time. I'd be interested on some more information on how much of the students are reporting incidents in school versus other sources, which we don't have to get into tonight because it's late. I'd also be interested in how we're using our DEI focus to deal with student safety, how we're addressing that with different particular groups, because every group has a different idea of perceived safety, and of course, culture and climate, depending on where you come from, that means something different to you as well. And then, for a later date, maybe, you know, the next time we reconvene, or have this opportunity to really hear about what we should be doing or focused on for next steps for continuing to build the relationship, specifically with students and law enforcement, from where the students sit in their purview, and then also what options we may be thinking about as a division in the future. And that's it. Thank you.
Outstanding. Chief Newsome, thank you for coming this evening. We really appreciate it. I appreciate your close relationship with Dr. McDade and the work you do to keep us secure, and Ron, and Mr. Bach, the, I thank you. You know, the, looking at security is a continuous improvement work, and it's the work that, you know, we really appreciate you all doing, and to reassure the public that we are always reassessing, always looking at our procedures, protocols, safety and security as we see needs. So, I thank you very much, and thank you for coming this evening. Okay. With that, we'll move next to 1703 prevailing wage resolution. This item's on for action. I need a motion in order, Ms.?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'm under the Prince William County, excuse me, I'm under the Prince William County School Board, approve the prevailing wage resolution.
Do I have a second?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I have a second.
Ms. Zargarpur seconds motion and discussion. Okay, anybody want, Ms. Wall, yes. Okay, you don't want to start. All right, Mr. Wilk.
Huh?
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go.
Oh, no, here we go.
You ready? Go, go.
Okay.
Keep it quick, fella.
Okay, Lori gets 40 minutes.
Hey now, school safety.
Okay. So, just want to recognize tonight that I'm excited that we're voting on this resolution and taking this step to include prevailing wages in our future construction contracts. As the son of a 40-year UAW worker, a member of the UFCW throughout college, and finally, the former vice president of the Prince William Federation of Teachers, I believe this resolution will do more to set our kids up for success. This, to me, is a fundamental component of building our profile of a Virginia graduate. This resolution will ensure that new schools we build offer opportunities for good wages, benefits, and apprenticeship programs, or additional workforce development. A prevailing wage policy will make sure that contractors who build our projects pay Prince William County residents what they are worth. In my opinion, this is good for the taxpayer because we get a better project than our end. It's good for the workers. We keep them in our county. We don't need people going to apprenticeships for electrical programs, having to go to Maryland. We don't need welders having to go down to Norfolk. We can keep our people in our county and provide them local jobs with local contractors who will not get underbid by out-of-town competition. It's time to do right by these kids who are pursuing these career pathways, providing job opportunities to our future welders, HVAC workers, electricians, plumbers, pipe fitters, and the many other careers in our trades. We need this resolution, and I will be proud to support this resolution tonight. By setting a prevailing wage, we are supporting a competitive business environment for our contractors while doing right by our workers. We always say now that not every kid needs to go to college, or college is not for everyone. Well, now it's time to help create those opportunities for those students pursuing those career pathways. I do want to say again in closing, I do want to thank the DC Metro Building Trades and the 17 Construction Unions in Northern Virginia for their active and ongoing support. I look forward to continuing to work with our trade unions to supply pathways for our students and graduates to get good, middle-class jobs and live where they work, right here in Prince William County. Thank you.
Ms., anybody who's next, who wants to raise their hand? We've got to move, folks. Ms. Wall?
Sure.
The dissenting opinion.
I'll go.
There you go.
So, I, I offer an alternative viewpoint of the resolution before us, and so, as I see it, first of all, this resolution is here not because it aligns to our key commitments under the strategic plan, but because it aligns with the priorities of political forces in Prince William County and beyond. That being said, I wish to speak to my concerns about the merits of prevailing wage provision before us tonight. First of all, I fear that this resolution will have a negative effect on our budget. We have a set pot of money, it's a big pot of money, but we do not raise revenue, and we have a lot of needs, and we've also hired a lot of people. We just heard tonight that we've hired an additional 104 security people, which I think is great, but it's still people that we need to pay, and it all goes into the pot of money. We allocate funds based on priority, as we should. Passing this resolution commits us to spend a significant amount of money on an action that is not a strategic priority. When a new or different priority is identified, such as this, the money must come from somewhere. It is my opinion that the dollars we receive from taxpayers for schools, from the 57.23% revenue share agreement with the Board of County Supervisors, should go toward educational purposes, and I believe should be invested as often as possible into the classroom. Second, if we are going to be spending a pot of increased money on wages, I would like it to go, first and foremost, to our own employees, especially teachers, and those who work directly with our children. If I were to approve an increase in wages for any group of workers, I would use this money to give to our very own educators for a raise. They are the ones who work for us day in, day out, to guide our students to excellence. I have no doubt that I don't actually know how much this is going to cost us, but I, when I asked last week or two weeks ago, it was 10% to 20% increase. It's going to be a really big pot of money. Third, our U.S. economic situation currently is volatile and potentially grim. Inflationary pressures mean the dollars do not go as far as they used to, and economic forecasts are warning of recession. I do not think it prudent in such an uncertain economic environment as this that we would adopt a measure that we know will add 10% to 20% cost to our construction costs right off the bat. If the economy continues to struggle or heads into recession, we will be faced with even harder choices to make. For instance, we have many more employees, as I said before, on our payroll now than we did three years ago. I don't see that it's fiscally prudent to agree to this resolution as proposed. And lastly, if one studies the origins of the prevailing wage movement and its effects on construction labor markets historically, and importantly, the effects on those markets when prevailing wage provisions are repealed, one would see that prevailing wage laws are not all they would appear on their face. Historically, prevailing wage laws were enacted to make it harder for minority and non-union workers to obtain work. This is because prevailing wage policies insulated employers from the competitive bidding process on public work projects. It is a historical fact that the Davis Bacon Act, the federal prevailing wage provision that was enacted during the Great Depression era of the 1930s, protected unionized white workers from competition from non-unionized black workers on federal public works projects, insulating unions and their members from competition. So, prevailing wage laws lead to less fair, less inclusive, and less flexible construction labor markets. In contrast to conventional wisdom, it is the repeal of prevailing wage laws that leads to growth in not only wages, but the number of jobs available in construction sector employment, and small, local businesses, often minority-owned, are better able to compete. In states that have repealed prevailing wage laws, they have seen a reduction in the wage gap between black and white workers and an increase in available jobs. And contrary to what people might think, when prevailing wage laws are repealed, construction markets experience more jobs and fewer barriers to entry into the market, and the construction sector experience, employment sector grows. So, to conclude, because I see this as a political move, because of its effect on our budget, and its disconnect with our strategic priorities, because of the uncertain economic forecast and volatile construction markets, and because of historical and practical impacts of prevailing wage laws, I cannot support this resolution and urge against its passage.
Okay, so I'll be last then. Ms. Wall, thank you for that. I always appreciate the dissenting opinion. So, let me, let me, let me start by saying that my five years here on the school board has been committed to paying everyone more. We have a, we have incredible record over the last five years of increasing teacher salaries, all staff salaries, and really in a record fashion. The posture of this board and the current Board of County Supervisors has been to do so. Prior boards, prior Board of County Supervisors did not commit to paying teachers, staff, or anyone, which is why we're in the predicament we're in as the lowest paid of the large school systems in Northern Virginia. We continue to be there because it's difficult to catch up. That being said, I believe that, you know, to be consistent with the work I've done, I firmly believe paying folks prevailing wage, fair wages, is important. That's why I'm supporting this resolution. It is consistent with my posture for the last five years. I've been criticized for giving teachers raises as well. You know, I've heard from folks who say, "Look, if you give teachers more money, there's less money that goes into, you know, buying books and curriculum and computers for kids." So, that were the, that was the argument before I got on this board. We didn't give, there was never a time that they were getting both a step and a COLA in the same year for many years, since prior to the recession. And so, you know, when I came on the board, I said, "We're going to do a step and a COLA every year we possibly can. We have to. We got to do the most we can." And I was committed to doing that, and that meant taking money from other things. So, the money that goes to prevailing wage, as pointed out by one of our speakers and by Ms. Wall, it will come from bonding, and over the last three years, we have borrowed less each year than we ever have. We've saved significant money this year. On average, we were borrowing about $120 million a year. This year, I think it was $48 million. Last year was in the $84 million, which means we have, we will have savings. So, this board has acted in a, with fiscal responsibility, with due diligence, so much so that we maintain a AAA bond rating, one of 53 districts in the nation, that has a AAA bond rating, which allows us to borrow at much cheaper cost. AAA bond ratings are also given out based on municipal government's commitment to ESG. ESG is Environment, Social, and Governance. Prevailing wage tends to be something looked upon fairly. It's what the federal government does as well. And so, that adds to our ability to keep AAA bond ratings. I've done prevailing wage, you know, I've supported it at the university-wide level and wage theft programs there. I am committed to making sure, and I have done that at the University of Virginia, that I'm committed to making sure that our workers, whether they be contracted, whether they work in our buildings, that we're doing the best we can. We are the largest employer in the county. I do believe that our students will end up, many of them can end up, working this trade. And to address the idea that, you know, contractors are given, you know, so you could do, many times prevailing wage goes hand-in-hand with project labor agreements. So, PLAs are very good ways to ensure that, okay, we want this work to go to local companies. We want this work to go maybe to minority, veteran-owned, women companies. So, project labor agreements are actually good ways to sort out the, sort of the negative side effects, one could say, of, as Ms. Wall pointed out, some of the prevailing wage history in the past. And so, that's part of the reason PLAs have developed. And so, I fully support this motion. I think it's, you know, we're already paying in many ways prevailing wage because of inflation already. Some of that cost increases are already baked into the cost of the work we're doing. I've looked at studies from Loudoun County, who's also looking at this, who did not think it would be 10%, 15%. They have come in lower than that. And so, I believe that, and by the way, Prince William County Board of County Supervisors already adopted this for all their procurement. The Prince William Service Authority has also, either has or will be adopting it as well. Fairfax County, and I think Loudoun County, will be following shortly, but they're all, you know, at this point. And so, you know, I have a record of spending responsibly here, better than past boards, giving raises at rates far more, and making sure the money goes to the students. I've, you know, there, it would be very hard to criticize anything this board has done in keeping money out of the classroom. If anything, we've done the exact opposite of whatever any other board prior to 2018 had ever done, or the Board of County Supervisors, with Chair Wheeler's commitment to schools. We have a friend in a good place who's making sure that we're getting funding at a much higher rate than we ever had before. So, with that, I will be supporting this motion, and I do appreciate the discussion. Please vote. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
The vote is six yes, one no, Wall, one absent, Ralston. Motion passed.
Okay, we'll move on to Board Matters. Mr. Wilk. Oh, what? Oh, yes, revisions to policy 1704. Okay. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Leeteve. I believe that the Prince William County School Board approved the revisions to policy 795, parental access to information and notice for certain materials.
Do you have a second?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Dargapour.
I second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Wilk, you have a motion. You and Ms. Wall have an addendum or, I mean amendment.
Yes, sir.
Make the motion.
I move to amend the proposed revisions to the school board policy 795 by requiring that a notice be given five days in advance of any school-wide presentation instead of three.
Do you have a second for that motion? Ms. Jessie seconds a motion. We have a discussion on the amended motion. Any discussion? Ms. Wall.
This, this change from three to five days is, is a good one. I support that change as proposed. It's something that Ms. Jessie proposed at her last meeting. She felt like a few more days lead time would be doable and desirable. And so I agree with her. I think that's fine. It seems like our staff can manage that, so I have no objections to making that change.
Doable and desirable. I like it. Any other discussion? Please vote. This is the vote on the amended motion. So this will amend the original motion, so please vote on this. Did you vote, Ms. Jessie? Yes, for Ms. Jessie.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Okay, now we'll move to discuss the broader motion. Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you. So just to briefly summarize where we're at with this proposed policy change since our last meeting, I do want to thank the teachers who reached out to me to discuss their concerns, and many of these issues are now addressed in the proposed updates. Number one, through collaboration with Division Council, the Superintendent's Office, and my other colleagues, we have updated the language to include parents as well as guardians with the language. Number two, based on educator concerns, we have updated the language to make clear that the policy does not pertain to presentations and performances by students or to events occurring outside of the normal school day. Number three, again, I do want to reiterate that I'm not aware of any administrator in the school division who does not already follow this practice. Between newsletters, smore updates, calendar posting, websites, my understanding is most leaders already adopt a practice like this. My sons attend two separate schools and the communications in both of these schools is superb between the two buildings. My wife and I receive weekly newsletters, text alerts, voicemails, and regular updates on the school websites. Again, these are just some of the common practices throughout the school division. Number four, although there was some confusion last week about the policy change itself, there is no existing policy like this already in the books. The goal of this policy change is to put practice into formal policy. Parents should not have to rely on having an extremely communicative administration at their child's building. The proposed policy change formalizes best practices for organizational coherence. In closing, I'm happy to co-sponsor with Ms. Wall this measure. So we're not dissenting on this one, no. Because I believe definitely that we need transparency and formalizing best practices in the policy. This proposed change will further promote parental engagement, protect the division by further promoting transparency, and align our communication to the strategic plan.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I, I still, I appreciate the update of adding guardians. I still feel like this policy is duplicative in nature and adds more additional work on our current staff. I believe that we have protocols and other policies that address this. Or if this is absolutely necessary need, that it should be its own separate policy. The original policy dealt with specifically the Protection of People Rights Amendment, which dealt with surveys and collection of information and marketing purposes and things of that nature. I don't think that the two should be married together into one joint policy because they are two separate issues. This has not been an issue of concern outside of, I believe, last year's incident or however you would like to define it, where a library book was read over the intercom. I have been, having been a former student, as a parent, have never been surprised by what presentation or material that was going on school-wide for where my student attended. And I think even more so now in the days of technology. I know not only what my student is experiencing in their day to day, the classroom while it's being taught, but also what's going on in the school from multiple viewpoints and lenses. And I also think this is covered under our regulations. I don't support this in this current format, and I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, please vote. Oh, Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Leeteve. So this provision, as I see it, meets our strategic commitments of family and community engagement and organizational coherence. I think it is the right place to put it with the Protection of People Rights Amendment and the parental access to information. As board members, one of our key responsibilities is, besides hiring our superintendent, is to enact policy. And policy and governance are at the heart of what we do. And this language formalizes in policy what is or should be occurring with our engagement and interactions with parents and guardians, and also formalizes a procedure that we are already doing. And so I believe what policy should reflect, what we're as accurately, as accurately as possible, ooh, it's late, what we are doing, and that what we are doing should be reflected in our policy and our regulations. It's just better for all of us if we do that. It shields us from accusations of lack of transparency. It shields us from conflict with parents and the larger community. In so many areas, it is just really good board governance. And so I think that this provision does that, meets the goals of transparency, communication, gives parents notice. I also believe that it will foster parent-child communication. If parents know about something that's coming up, they can have that conversation. I think I used the example last time. You know, I, my student came home talking about drugs. Lots of, lots of questions about drugs. And I was taken aback a little bit, and I thought, why, why are you talking to me about drugs? Who, who are your friends? But it turns out it was a presentation that had occurred at school, and they had talked about all kinds of things that I hadn't yet really talked about in great detail with my child. So this, I think, will help with those kinds of things. It was a thing, a school-wide thing, you know, and I, and I just missed it. I didn't realize that's what was going on. So I think that is good. We should, we should foster communication between parents and children, parents and parent, parents and community members, parents in the school. And we do that. So our policy and regulations should reflect that. And, and in that sense, it strengthens organizational coherence, which means all our schools are on the same page. And it, and Mr. Wilk addressed this, but you know, some schools may need to try a little bit harder to meet this goal, and that's fine. That means that all of our schools are, are functioning at a really high level, and that is a desirable goal, and that fits with our strategic commitment as well. So for those reasons, I think that this is, although it is a simple policy and not very long or anything like that, I think it's an important one. And so I will be approving it.
Ms. Jackson. Please vote. I support the motion, by the way. I like it. It's good. Okay. If, if it matters.
The vote is six yes, one no, Williams, one absent, Ralston. Motion passed.
Okay, Board Matters. Ms. Wilk. It's 11:19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where's the clock so I don't make sure I run over? Oh, here we go. Want to thank everyone. So since the last meeting, I have the pleasure to attend. On 11:04, Forest Park High School football was victorious over Hilton High School. Forest Park didn't make it into the playoffs. Unfortunately, they came up short, but they had a great season. Want to recognize them and all of our athletes. Forest Park volleyball girls went to regionals, fell a little short, but again, want to recognize them for that great work as well. On 11:06, Ashland PTO had their movie night. I reprised my role of running the glow stick station again, so I'm getting pretty good at that with movie nights. I do want to say we had a really neat thing. On 11:07, you know, best practice and stuff. I had an interaction with the superintendent down in King William County, and I mentioned Potomac Shores Middle School. And I said about the best practices in the state-of-the-art building that we have. And I just offhandedly invited him to come up, you know, why not, right? And he accepted that offer, and he ventured up here with his entire cabinet. And I was able to join the entire team of our central office team, who took the time out of that day to venture around and not only show obviously the facility itself, but actually look at some of the project-based learning that was going on in the building and best practices that were evidenced by the amazing staff and team at Potomac Shores Middle School. So that was a great experience. I love having visitors come see things. And then following that, we did have our Veterans Day events. I do want to thank our veterans again for their service. Potomac District has, I think, the largest percentage of veterans out of any district, probably largely because of proximity to Quantico, which technically the base is in the Potomac District. I did attend the Potomac Shores Veterans Breakfast on 11:09. On 11:10, I attended Patty's Veterans Breakfast, Veterans Day Breakfast. And then, no, it's too bad chances in here. He mentioned that he would like to see school board members go and sit in classes during instructional time, so I had an update for him. So last week, I went to Swans Creek Elementary School. And although I visit the schools and I jump in and out of classrooms, I really wanted to be hyper-focused on a particular grade level. And my goal was to see the cross collaboration and the unique kind of differentiation from, you know, one teacher in second grade and another in second grade, who if you go in the room, they have the same learning objective on the board because it's all aligned with the pacing guide, but they're all teaching in their own way. But it's the same objective and the standard, but you had their own unique contribution to it. And it was great to see the students engaged. You can definitely tell there's professional learning communities, collaboration. And so, and thank you Pastor Will Archer, Potomac Valley Church, for having me this Sunday also. Thank you.
Ms. Dargapour? Good evening, Prince William County. I'll make this fairly short. I want to, I'm not announce, but announce. Very tired right now. Hilton High School's automotive, automotive team did win their national competition. They took five students to Las Vegas. It's two girls on the team, three boys, and they, basically, I got to watch them take an engine apart and put it back together. And it was amazing. I watched this at Hilton before they went. They were practicing, and it took like 17 minutes, I think. So congratulations to them. I just heard tonight that Colgan's volleyball team made the state championships, so they will be there Saturday. Want to remind people that specialty programs are open now, so you need to take a look at, if you're interested in science, or art, or technology, or ROTC, whatever your interests are, go ahead and take a look and see what our offerings are, because those applications are going to be coming up soon. There was a lot of discussion tonight about family engagement. I want to also make sure you know that on the VDOE site, there's a whole section for parents and family links and information. Just this week, I posted some information about a special education survey that the state is interested in, so you can go look for that. I am thankful for the transparency that was offered tonight and our discussion about safety and security in our schools. And I'm greatly appreciative that the Police Chief Nussham got to come and talk to us. We will, many of us are going to VSBA tomorrow, a few hours from now, really. And I am happy to say that I am going to be the District 10 representative, so I'm looking forward to talking with our elected officials in Washington, DC about how they can support public education. Thank you all. Have a great night. Ms. Wall.
Thank you. Lots of events around Gainesville. Just a few highlights. I attended Touch Base at Ronald Reagan Middle School on October 31st, Halloween. It was great to see so many parents there. I loved that event at the high school level, and I'd never seen it at the middle school level, so I think it was awesome. I went to Gravely Elementary School at the invitation of the PTO and read a really hilarious book to Ms. Saldana's fifth grade class, and it was so much fun. So I am officially open for invitations to come read to kids because I love books and I love kids, so it was awesome. Also, on November 4th, Battlefield was victorious against Patriot in a cross-county rivalry game. It was tons of fun. Congratulations to the team on that victory and condolences for their tough loss on November 10th against Colonial Forge. And good luck to Patriot and Freedom, who are numbers two and one in the rankings. May you all be victorious. Monday, the 7th, I attended Safe Schools Advisory Council, where I serve with Ms. Dargapour. We have been doing a lot of great stuff on that board, as you saw tonight. A lot of great ideas about safety and security. I look forward to serving, I appreciate being able to serve on that capacity, in that capacity. On the 10th, Mountain View Elementary held a Veterans Day celebration, which was very awesome. Both of my grandfathers were World War II vets, so it's always been a favorite holiday of mine. Kids at Mountain View sang patriotic songs to the veterans and currently serving members of the armed forces. And it was a special treat to meet Mrs. Harrison's family members, who are veterans, are currently serving. Last Saturday was the Viboda's Regional Orchestra Event, and PWCS had a great showing. It was, we were well represented by both the junior and senior, in both the junior and senior regional orchestras. And I just want to say, I'm just so proud of the students. Their musicianship was amazing. I just kept saying, like, I can't believe these are high school students. So impressed by how well they've recovered from the crazy and incredibly insane year that was orchestra on Zoom. So well done, if anybody's out there listening. You were fabulous. And I loved, my favorite part was how the audience, mostly parents, grandparents, friends, cousins, sisters, and brothers, stood up at the end and gave them a standing ovation that just went on and on and on. And it was just, it was awesome. So I'm looking forward to professional development at the VSBA conference that starts in less than eight hours for me. And I, I believe in being a lifelong learner and in developing myself as a board member and a public servant. So I'm really pleased to be participating. And I also wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to all, and I hope you have the blessing of gratitude in your lives. One of my favorite thoughts about gratitude is this. Gratitude is said to be the memory of the heart. So may the memories of your heart find expression to those around you at this holiday time. And to all, good night.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I just want to start by again thanking Chief Nussham for taking time out of his busy schedule to come and speak to us this evening. Just very quickly, the Governor's School Innovation Park held a meeting this evening. Clearly, I was not able to participate or attend, but will be happy to provide updates once I receive that information to our viewing public. Ms. Dargapour mentioned, most of us are going to VSBA tomorrow, which is a Virginia School Board Association Conference that's held every year in November. Also, the Racial and Social Justice Commission is, was scheduled to meet this Thursday. That meeting has been canceled for this month, so there'll be no update following that. I want to wish all those who are participating in robotics competitions coming up this weekend, the most success. I know it's a long day. I personally have now rejoined the ranks of robotics mom, which I'm so super excited about, and look forward to attending many robotics competitions and hopefully entertaining more robotics discussions here from the DIES. I have, as the Woodbridge District Representative, an opening for Safe Schools Advisory Council, so if you're interested, please reach out. I know there are many things happening at the state level with regard to education. There's a lot of revisions of standards and policies. I encourage all of those watching to pay attention to what goes on, not only here locally, but at the state level, and provide comments when comments are appropriate. Volunteer or ask to be appointed to boards, and, and just generally participate to the best of your ability. I want to send a special shout out to Kilby Elementary School. I was able to attend their Title I Family Mystery Night. I'm sorry, I was not able to stay longer. Earlier in the week, I Earlier in the week, I did, as I always do, which is volunteer all day long for Election Day. I usually bring a bunch of students with me. Most of them that I know have aged out. They're now in their 20s, so I only had a few, along with my youngest son. I believe in participating in our democracy and bringing the next generation along so that they can learn how to participate too. The last thing I want to say is it is Native American History Month, and this is a native, an acknowledgement of that. I would like to acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territories of the Doig and Moig tribes for which we are learning, working, and organizing today. I thought it was very interesting. I have a soror who is an educator, and she shared this website with me, which is native-land.ca. It's a great website. You can go on there, and it gives you a map of every place that Native American tribes existed prior to the current division, which is the United States. It's really cool if you're interested in learning about that and the land that you live on or where you've traveled to. It's a really cool site, and I thought it was very appropriate considering it is Native American History Month. Hope everyone enjoys their Thanksgiving break.
Jessie?
Thank you. My cup gratitude tour continues, and I went to Cary Dale, and Eileen Trichell, a Title I teacher, received the cup. And I want to thank Eileen for sending a special note to me, a personal note, a card of saying thank you. And Chris Grasco, yes, Special Ed teacher at West Ridge Elementary, received her cup. I have three more schools to attend, Ocquon Marshall and Antietam. I'm looking forward to that. I also attended the Woodbridge High School ROTC Recognition of Veterans, and it was quite an affair, was the room, the auditorium was full, the Navy band was off the hook. Dr. McDay is not here, but the lady has some moves, and she can dance, so we all had a good time there. I also attended the multicultural night at Ocquon. Ocquon has, I don't know, probably at least 50 countries, and they serve food. I realized people from different countries want you to eat their food, and I tried to get out without eating the food, but I got to the door, and this lady had rice and goat meat. And I said, no, I don't want any, and she put some in my pan, and I had to eat. But, and I've been in those situations because they, their love for their country and their food is really important. I will bring photos next week. I attended the Change in the Narrative by Dr. King, a future king. He formed this organization of African-American boys, and they had three speakers who talked about becoming advocates, advocates for black boys, and realizing that there are such low expectations and that they are training these kids in biomedical. They have three kids who graduated, gone to high-ranked schools in biomedical, biomedical field, gaming, and drones. And so I say this in closing to Dr. Brown. You know, we belong to all these organizations, the Divine Nine, the African-American Church, these groups, and they are tutoring our kids because they know that they need the help. So my, I would like for you to put these people out of business. And I think that should be the job of the school system, because it should not be that every black church I know, every organization I know, we're always trying to train our kids. I, when my kids hit sixth grade, I said, math, I'm out, but I could afford a tutor. And most people cannot afford a tutor, so just put them out of business, and you did a great job tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
This year, Prince William County Schools recognized 10 new schools as Purple Heart Schools, including two in the Brentsville District, Piney Branch and T Claywood. This brings the total to 28 schools in Prince William County Schools. The Purple Star designation is awarded to military-friendly schools who have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. As this week was Veterans Day, I'm going to focus on two of the events that I attended. I was able to attend two of the many events in Brentsville District honoring veterans in the community, one at T Claywood and one at Victory Elementary. The students at both schools did a wonderful job performing. It was also great to see Patriot High School students help with the parade and the ceremony at T Claywood. I'm very thankful for the veterans in our community, including the students and family members, because time spent apart is also a service. Thank you to those who came to speak tonight, including Chief Newsome. Congrats to the Brentsville District cheer. Good luck to Brentsville District and Patriot in the upcoming games, and I just want to echo my support in revisiting Flex Days. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, Ms. Lilly had the line of the night. I'm going to read it. Dr. Brown, you should be putting those places out of business. You know? Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I, I think that was the best line. So I think that's, I think that's very important. Ms. Jessie, you were out of the room, I think, earlier when we were having the discussion when I spoke on the equity stuff, but I always appreciate Ms. Jessie's commitment to academic excellence, her work over the four, you know, five years I've worked with her on this board, her commitment to this. And I had said earlier that, you know, you'd been in education long enough that every 10 years they change the language, whether it's achievement, gap, opportunity, gap, or DEI. We're always doing, but it's always the same thing we're trying to address. It's the same thing. Gap's still there, and we're still trying to work on it. But I, but I really appreciate the work Dr. Brown's office is doing, Dr. McDay is doing, the whole team here on this effort. It is organized, it's coherent, it is a strong commitment division-wide. I like the fact that we're doing it for everyone, and I love the fact that we're committed to also accelerating everybody, and I think that's really critical. So I appreciate the work. Just reminding, congratulating, Colgan's volleyball team made it to the state championship. They're playing Saturday. On the tier-leading teams from Colgan and Brentsville that have done well, we have great teams still in playoffs coming up. We have Brentsville still in the playoffs for football, Patriots still in the playoffs, and Freedom's still in the playoffs. If I miss anybody, I apologize. We'll get to, get to that next time. For our seniors, you know, get your work in, get your stuff in for college applications, get your reference letters, keep working on that. When you see an application that looks hard to do, just start on a Saturday morning and work all day. I mean, it is, they can be, they can be tough to get through when you see all the essays you have to write, but it'll be worth it, I promise you. You know, keep pushing along, ask your teachers for help and your counselors. With that, everyone have a great night and happy Thanksgiving.